The Planning Commission for September 18th, 2025. First I guess we do a roll call.
Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Boswell.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Present.
Commissioner Gaddis.
Present.
Commissioner Conroy.
Here.
Commissioner Hazelton.
Eric.
Chairperson Craig.
Present.
Everyone is here and accounted for. Let's start off with a salute to the flag. Mr. Conroy, would you like to lead us in the salute of the flag?
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next. Next, we all have a packet of blue folder items that was printed out and handed to us, so.
Motion to receive and file blue folder items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So they're received. Let's see. Next, we have our consent calendar. These are business items except those formally noted as for public hearing or those polled for discussion as are assigned to the consent calendar. Commissioned members may request that any consent calendar items be removed, discussed, and acted upon separately. Items removed from the consent calendar will be taken up under the excluded consent calendar section below. Those items remaining on the consent calendar would be approved in one motion. Chair will call on anyone wishing to address the commission on any consent calendar item on the agenda, which has not been polled by the commission for discussion. Each speaker will be printed to speak only once on comments, and comments will be limited to a total of three minutes. Can we, I guess, approve that? Well, first thing is.
Do we have any comments?
Are there any comments to our consent calendar from many of the members? There are none?
None in the public?
Anything in with the public which speak on our consent calendar?
There are no e-attendees that would like to speak.
Very good. Okay.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the consent calendar items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, public participation on non-agenda items. This section is intended to provide members of the public with the opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on the agenda, on this agenda of our action. This section is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the commission. Each speaker will be permitted to speak only once. Written requests, if any, will be considered first under this section. Are there any non-agenda speakers for public participation? Don't see any? No cards? No one online?
No one online would like to speak.
Very good. So, next is receipt of all comments. We don't have that. Ex-party communication. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure or ex-party communication about the following public hearings. I guess we could start with Commissioner Light.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Boswell.
I've spoken to no one.
Commissioner Young.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Gaddis.
I spoke with members of the public.
Commissioner Conroy.
I spoke with Chair Craig.
And Commissioner Hazelton.
I spoke with members of the public, with Chair Craig, and with Councilperson Zane Obaji.
Pretty good. I spoke with, as mentioned earlier, Commissioner Hazelton and Commissioner Conroy, council member Obaji. I spoke with some members of the public and some business owners in Riviera Village. Very good. So next is our, J1, our public hearing for consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment to Title 10, Chapter 5, coastal land use plan implementing ordinance of the Redondo Beach Municipal Code, RBEMC, pertaining to regulations regarding ground floor professional offices, offices uses within the C2P-D-RIV zone. So we have a presentation, I believe.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So tonight, we are introducing our associate planner. He's been with the city now a year, but this is his first time presenting to this body and working with the Planning Commission. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sean O'Rourke.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This, and before you, is a zoning ordinance amendment pertaining to regulations for ground floor, street facing professional offices within the C2P-D-RIV zone. Is that too loud?
No, no, you're good. Your microphone just came on after you started speaking.
Yeah, I was going to say, your mic light wasn't on, but now it is.
Sean didn't teach you how to.
It's hard to tell from this perspective.
That's good.
The C2P-D-RIV zone is shown in pink on the map on this slide. It consists of most of South Catalina Avenue within Riviera Village between Avenue I to the north and Palos Verdes Boulevard to the south, as well as small sections of Vista Del Mar and Villa El Prado immediately to the east of South Catalina Avenue. The general plan states that the function and permitted uses in this area should provide for, quote, "the maintenance of the Catalina Avenue frontage as the primary pedestrian-oriented and scaled core of the village, containing commercial, restaurant, and related uses and development," end quote. The existing conditions largely reflect this, as South Catalina Avenue is largely populated with restaurants, retail shops, and other neighborhood-scale commercial operations. To maintain Riviera Village as a local-serving commercial zone with a distinct village-like feel and a high degree of pedestrian activity, the zoning ordinance currently permits offices within the C2P-D-RIV zone to locate only on the second floor or above, or on the ground floor to the rear of other permitted retail or service uses, provided that the pedestrian character of the corridor is not disrupted. Now, despite this existing regulation, professional offices have been previously allowed to locate within these spaces in the C2P-D-RIV if they have included an ancillary or a secondary permitted use such as a notary service. This has resulted in a number of professional office uses in spaces that may otherwise be occupied by commercial uses that are more consistent with the zone's purpose, as described in the municipal code and in the general plan. I want to note that the allowance of professional offices locating in this zone was permitted by a prior director and has since not been supported. I'd also like to note that offices are permitted to locate within ground floor, street-facing locations within, in other zones within Riviera Village. Current offices within the C2P-D-RIV are legal non-conforming uses that may continue to operate as they do today. So, at the direction of the city council, staff is proposing a zoning ordinance amendment that clarifies the existing regulation. The proposed ordinance, with new language underlined, is shown on the screen here and is attached to the administrative report. This clarifies that professional office uses such as real estate, excuse me, real estate, legal, or insurance offices cannot locate in ground floor, street-facing locations as either a primary or an ancillary use. I want to note that the highlighted and underlined phrase, "within the Riviera Village overlay zone, RIV," this was added so as to specify that this proposed amendment only applies to the C2P-D-RIV zone within Riviera Village. The Planning Division publicly noticed this hearing in accordance with the municipal code by publishing in the easy-reader, mailing notices to owners of properties within 300 feet of the affected area, and by posting notices of this hearing within the area. The Planning Division received approximately five calls and emails with individuals asking about how the proposed change would affect their particular property. Each individual was responded to by Planning Division staff. This morning, the Planning Division was forwarded a letter sent to the Planning Commission that stated concern with the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, and that letter is included as a blue folder item. Outside of that letter, and as is noted in the administrative report, no comments were received that responded to the intent, the substance, or the geographic applicability of this proposed amendment. See, pardon me. Oh, and I wanted to mention that the emails that were received by the Planning Division, excuse me, are attached to the administrative report. Finally, staff recommends a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the city council adopt the ordinance amendment to amend Title 10, Chapter 5, of the Redondo Beach Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation of ground floor professional office uses within the C2P-D-RIV zone. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for comments.
One question. It looks like there are two letters in our blue folder.
Yeah, there's two letters.
Yes. There was a second letter that was received after I had prepared the final materials at our 3:00 PM cutoff.
Yeah, it came in this afternoon.
They're both against it, yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
I had a question to start off with. Was there some kind of triggering incident that happened on this? Because my understanding is that these businesses that are currently operating, primarily real estate offices, they've been there for years, and they've been operating. Is there some critical problem that happened? The reason why this brought up? I understand it was not exactly per what the code was written, but staff at some point in the past had said that they were providing, like, notary service, for example, it wasn't necessarily considered to be just an office, because there are services. And real estate offices do provide more than just office services. They are, real estate itself is classified as a service industry, not unlike a lot of the other retail places in the Riviera Village. So was there some incident that happened that precipitated this need to make this change now?
There is not a single incident or group of incidents that I'm aware of, but Sean, if you would like to.
This, it came up with the prior council as an issue of concern. It was brought forward in transition with the new council. They determined they still wanted to invoke this new regulation. The concern being the primary uses, preferred uses in the village, especially on Catalina being the core of that pedestrian area, preserving those or making those available for those primary preferred uses. So the intention was to make sure no more going forward, and that's what this clarification is all about. So it's, I think, nothing specific other than a, an office, I think, that moved in that maybe two that came in that the prior council became aware of, and then that moved forward to the new council, and they're interested in pursuing the same regulation that's before you tonight.
Yeah, very good, because I want to follow up. Yeah, very, because I want to follow up, because I went back, I looked at the council meeting, it was January of this year, I think, January 21st, and I went and watched the meeting, and the, this was combined with another issue with the smoke shop ordinance that we were, that we, as a commission, had worked on a couple of months ago, we did a lot of changes on that. So, they talked about this topic for about forty minutes. So, it was the smoke shops, and then as a smaller portion with the Riviera Village. So, of that forty minutes, they spent about thirty-eight talking about smoke shops, and about one or two minutes about this. And when there was really no discussion with the council, one council member said, "Well, I really don't know about it, Paul, defer to you." And that seemed to be the extent of it. So, I thought it was unusual that it came back now. And, yeah, so, the concern is that this would, there would be a mass amount of these offices, primarily real estate offices, opening up, but like, I drove by, my bank's over there, I just drove around, there's like three or four empty spaces there now, and I don't see a lot of real estate offices clamoring to open up their doors there. So, it didn't really, that's why I was trying to understand what the urgency of this was. And obviously, the businesses that are there now, they've been operating for years, and I wasn't aware of any problem there. I go there a lot, so I don't, I talked to some other business owners there, they, I said, "Are they taking away parking spots, or are there problems with other things?" And not much at all, so.
No, it's more just being very clear about the preferred uses and having only those uses along that very, the core of the village. So, the, let's say, highest and best use for the, for those storefronts isn't office at the ground level, and we want to be clear and explicit about that. That was the direction that we're carrying forward. The council is going to revisit it after your meeting, so they might chew into it a little more and, you know, decide something else. We don't know yet.
That's true. No, that's happened before, so.
I have a question, just a really quick question. How many of these offices are there currently in those buildings?
So, we did a site visit in June of this year and identified four of the professional office uses. This is a good time to mention that the municipal code specifies offices, but breaks them into three subsections. So, there are government, professional, and medical offices, and just counting the professional offices, there were four that were identified.
Okay, and then how many are there total? Did you, better that color in?
I believe the number was between twelve and fifteen, but I would need to double check.
Twelve or fifteen other non-retail-type businesses, you mean?
So, that was, so I personally did the site visit, and it was identifying all offices within the C2PD district, so that caught some of the existing medical offices that are also on Catalina.
Offices, offices is a word used to say not retail.
Well, office, I would. Yeah, I mean, I would say office is its own particular use, and restaurant would also be.
Retail store is not an office.
That's correct. I would say a retail store could have an office.
What is it exactly that you only want in Riviera Village? Because it seems clear what you don't want on the ground floor are office-type businesses, as opposed to businesses that sell stuff. Is that how the dividing line goes?
That, I would say, is a good classification per what the municipal code has.
Selling products versus services.
Well, I would say also providing, yeah, like restaurants and cafes would also convince that. Sure. I agree.
Food, booze?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so, if I get this right, so would you said the ones that are there now are going to consider non-conforming legitimate uses? So, they're grandfathered in, essentially, and that's not going to be taken away some point in the future as of now?
That's correct. That was something that had crossed our mind and that we had discussed internally, especially in lieu of the, or I should say, after the smoke shop ordinance has been discussed at the city. There is no sunset clause, or there is no coercion towards these offices being closed or being forced to relocate.
Just keeping anything new from coming in.
Exactly. Any expansion, I would say that any expansion would just be, would have to be consistent with the municipal code.
All right, and the second part of my question is that one of the letter points out that professional services are different than administrative offices, which I do see that difference. Professional services, you're offering something, and I could see a point being made that there are some professional services that are consistent with the idea of walking street. So.
What would that be?
Well.
Bike rental.
Palm reading comes to mind, but.
Massage?
But as a psychologist, counseling, yeah, training, personal train, I could see other kinds of professional services that might be a case. Is that something that could be a conditional use permit that would come to the Planning Commission, or is that just going to be, they're going to be considered just like office buildings? Which I see the point of no office buildings. People that go in there to work there all day really help nothing to the walking street, but there are, I think, legitimate things that could be service-driven.
Yeah, and there are multiple other service-oriented businesses along there that are permitted. They fall into a different category. They're personal improvement services, things like that, so we don't put them in the office bucket. So, that's, so those service uses do, are allowed there as well.
So, it seems really the realtor ones that are the problematic ones, because people think that you're not going to walk down the street and decide to buy a house, is the thinking.
Sorry, Wayne, but.
Well, I mean, we'll talk more about.
It's really the professional office category, and real estate happens to be what's located in those, in those locations on that corridor now that have sparked this concern.
Or you might be there buying a house, and then you go get lunch. Or both, or actually both, but go ahead.
All right. A few points I just wanted to share. I agree with the goal of keeping Riviera Village pedestrian-friendly, but I'm concerned about unintended consequences from this. These would be restricting ground floor office use may have, may create unintentionally, or may unintentionally create additional vacancies. Retail shops often close early, earlier than restaurants, thereby not supporting the nighttime activity of these restaurants, and they're not, and they're allowed within this zone without restriction, is my understanding.
I like the openly real estate offices. Those are great.
After-hours real estate.
Fortunately, our restaurants and shops are open during the day as well. Point being, the shops close, the restaurants stay open later typically. So, I just wanted to say, we should be cautious about imposing limits that may not reflect how the village actually functions day-to-day currently. And lastly, professional service providers like real estate and insurance offices often generate walk-in traffic.
Yeah.
That support nearby restaurants and shops. These are much different, to your point, than purely administrative offices, where just people come into work and there's no walk-in traffic.
Commissioner Gattis.
Okay, can we go through the history of this? Can we start with when the original sort of zoning with the preferred uses being retail stores and restaurants? When did that occur?
You know, that's a general plan policy that really specifies the preferred uses that you're mentioning.
Okay.
So, that would have been.
Pre-1992?
Early nineties, yeah.
Yeah, so, 1992, speaking as a General Plan Advisory Committee member, the, yeah, that plan was pre-1992. 1992 was the first time that we were presented a codified copy of the plan, but it may go back much further, and just taking a stroll down Catalina, one sees that those establishments, the structures, go back a lot further than 1992. So, so, the plan was created, approved by, it was created by a GPAC, a General Planning Advisory Committee, prior to 1992, sometime in the late eighties. Then it was approved by the City Council in 1992, right? Okay. The, the, the preference, the restriction that Catalina, Catalina Boulevard, Catalina Avenue. Avenue, Catalina Avenue would, between Palos Verdes and Avenue I, I believe it is, right, would be either retail stores or restaurants, that that's the way they, they wanted it to be, sort of like a food court. Think of a mall with a food court in it. You can put a real estate office in a food court, perhaps, but it doesn't really lend itself to, to the use of that just particular place, right?
Rob, in eighty-two, were there?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, were there twenty-five percent of the offices, or the, that zoning real estate or offices?
I don't think so. I think something happened, and we can trace that back, because it wasn't that long ago, when this exception was created, and who created it and for whom was the exception, where they said, "Here's the exception, look back at the document. The exception is, if you have specifically," and it names it in the exception, "a, a, what is it called again?"
Notary.
"Notary public."
Right, notary.
Then you can put this usage in there, as long as there's a notary there. So, the next question for you, under current circumstances, if I walk in with, you know, an architecture firm that builds pipe, that designs pipes that go into, into oil refineries, but we also hire a notary public who's, who's doing some notary work, you know, at the desk, you know, doing admin stuff, somebody wants something notarized, and, "Oh, yeah, I can do it right here." So, that pipeline architecture firm is now, has a right to go ahead and move in and open up shop right there? Is that the case?
That's not the current interpretation.
Okay.
No.
What is the current, how does it, how does the current interpretation differ than the hypothetical scenario that I just drew up?
It would, well, you know what, it would be helpful, let's pull up the existing ordinance and take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you happen to have that?
Which section exactly?
There would be just, just a, you could go to the slide with the ordinance.
Sure.
And, and then we'll look at the language that's not underlined and highlight.
This here?
Yeah. Obviously, it's only on the second floor and over above, or on the ground floor to the rear.
Oh, yeah.
Retail services provided that the pedestrian character, yeah. Yeah, that, it's, I mean, it's problematic in the way it's written, and that's another reason to be very specific with this additional language.
Right.
So, you know, and there was lobbying for just exactly what you're referring to. So, we really had to look closely, was it? And it's.
Yeah, where does it say, "No, no architects who are doing plumbing for..."
Well, it says it there in the first line, because that would be an office use.
Okay.
So, they'd have to go, we would say, "Hey, you need to go on the second floor or above," unless there is, to the rear of a, really, what, the way we look at it now is a legitimate retail or service use, that's not just ancillary to your business, but that's separate from your business, and then you're behind it.
Okay.
We could, under those circumstances, we would today allow ground floor office, but it would have to be behind.
I mean, we're talking about the storefront right there.
Yeah, but the storefront, no.
So, the storefront presently can be, it's allowed for that to be a, a real estate office, and is it defined as residential real estate, or it can be commercial real estate?
Yeah, that wouldn't, we wouldn't differentiate between that.
They do both, they do both.
They're both business, professional office.
Right, right, but I guess what, what is being proposed here is that we're going to specify that, that it's only restaurants and retail stores that we want in there. From now on, no more new, any offices, right? Is that what's being proposed?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so.
I think he's just, they're just trying to strengthen it.
Yes.
It's like they're doing it already, but they want to really, they're not letting off.
We want to be explicit.
Go in there as it is.
Right. Well, and right now, this exception is the, is the, if they have notary public services, right? That's how they get in there.
Is that true, Sean?
Well, it's, it's, it's what it reads now, some, some permitted retail or service business could locate on the front with, let's say, the architect's office to the rear. That used to be, and that's what we would allow. It would have to, though, be, the way we're interpreting it now, a separate retail or service-oriented business that is standalone, that would be on the front, and then the architecture, architect's office could go to the rear.
Yeah, and I'm not, again, I'm not talking about the back of the offices. I'm very focused on what the intent is, and that is to turn the street, the street storefront back into that, that the only new things allowed in there are going to be either retail stores or restaurants, right? Am I correct?
Yeah, we do have some other service-oriented businesses.
You do have the nail salon. You do have the land use table.
Have a training place.
But by this description, an accounting service office would be allowed, wouldn't it?
The, do you mean as amended?
As written.
As, as written before the underlined amendments?
Permitted retail or service uses.
Right.
Accounting service.
Is a service.
Right?
Oh, no, we, we would say accounting would be a professional office.
Okay, yeah, this, where is the distinction? This is really fuzzy.
I mean, we've got, we could pull up the definition.
Could we?
We certainly could.
I mean, it's a service. How's that different than, you go to an accounting office to get your taxes done, or you go to a nail place to get your nails done?
Yeah.
Nails is a personal improvement service by definition. So, nail salons is personal improvement, by definition. Business professional office is accounting, you know, they're.
Well, personal taxes are a personal service, right?
Taxes, but it's still, we'd still look at that as, as business office, professional office.
But I think that's what, it goes back to administrative offices, where people show up and they go into an office, they close the door behind them, and they're just in there working all day, and then they leave and go home at the end of the day.
Right.
Nobody's interested in having more of that, but if you're in a service industry, regardless of what that service is, it says here, "service uses."
They're trying to clean it up.
Right, those are, those are permitted.
I understand that.
So, service uses are permitted at the front.
We might be suggesting it strengthened further and defined more closely.
Then we'll be, we could certainly take some direction as, as a consensus of this commission and, and, and offer that up to the council when we, when we bring it to them.
I would be in favor of restricting administrative offices, but allowing sales service businesses.
Well, we do allow sales, we do allow services, and again, as defined, our personal improvement services. So, you'll see a lot of palates.
Okay, is it, somewhere else, does it say personal improvement services? Because I don't see that in the order that's written or amended.
That's what we, that's how we define service uses.
Well, professional services are much more broad than just.
Well, it's professional office versus service uses. So, services are, services, and it's, we can, we can certainly add language.
Professional offices are providing the service.
Right, it seems, it seems.
That's why they're not taxed, you're not given a product or given a service, so.
It seems unfair. This is too big.
So, yeah, plumber's office, you know, although plumbers are very important, it might not be the best thing for Catalina Avenue in that block, right? That area, right?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it wouldn't serve the overall goal that we're talking about.
No, that, they wouldn't, we would categorize them as a, you know, contractor's yard or, or a, as an office, professional office, if they have a, you know, brick-and-order location.
Right. So, it depends on the character also, if they were to have a retail element.
We can definitely clean up the resolution, because we don't like the definitions, right? We don't like that. But I think what they're trying to do is, you know, we, with, even the ACAP's coming up, right, as soon as this settled, you guys, we have to be able to envision, what is that part of that street about? It's about walking, it's about getting on your bike, it's about, as a family, going down there, shopping, going to restaurants. I know my friends and family, that's what we do down there, okay? If we're going to deal with real estate, it's usually in the back side, closer to Trader Joe's, you've got some offices there that you can, you know, get stuff done. So, I see what they're trying to do, we can clean up that language, but if we look at the number, it's almost about, if there's only twelve, that would be over twenty-five percent are offices right now, currently. That seems too high to me. If there's.
You weren't talking about Catalina Avenue when you said that number, right?
That's correct, and I was also referring.
There's not many buildings there, that's quite a lot.
I was also referring to, I was also including medical office, which I just want to be clear about. It's not just strictly the professional offices that have been the focus of this conversation.
So, you're talking, you're saying there were twelve to fifteen professional offices on Catalina Avenue?
No, there were four. Four professional offices on South Catalina Avenue.
Buildings total. I asked him, how many? Buildings total. I asked him, how many are there that are zoned at twelve to fifteen?
Talking about, I think, all of Riviera Village.
About the existing use based on the site visit that the division conducted in June.
But and all of those are on Catalina Avenue?
That's all we're talking about.
I believe so, yes.
He's including medical too.
Yes.
Which is a subject to this.
And all of those are on the ground floor facing the street.
That's correct.
Twelve or twelve to.
Twelve to fifteen, including, yes.
If you open up the map again, we can count them.
No, no, I'm just.
Point, if there's four and and make your number, make it twenty. That's still a lot.
Oh, I agree with you, yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure that we're talking about on that stretch of Catalina.
Yeah, there's.
And they're all on the ground floor.
I think if we look at the map.
The pink.
Some of them, yes.
They have the map, adding the overlay.
Can you pull up the zoning overlay map?
Can you pull that up so we can talk about or just the paint, the colorful overlay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
This one here.
About there, Rob, is that?
So I I I just want to state that there's a cluster of the medical offices. When you get closer to Palos Verdes Boulevard on the southwestern side of the C two P D, which is in pink.
Dental office.
So there are, there is a, that that's essentially a, I don't want to say it's one facility, but it's almost like a concentrated campus.
Forty buildings.
Of those medical offices.
Yeah, it's the very end.
And a lot of those don't front on Catalina.
Right, no.
Yeah.
So are you, you're not suggesting the medical offices shouldn't be there? You're just trying to restrict real estate and accounting offices? Or is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Does medical fall under a personal improvement? Is that why?
No.
Okay.
It's it, they're subject to it as well, so we're not going to have medical offices fronting on on Catalina going forward either.
So you are restricting medical offices?
But they're already restricted because they're never going to have a retail or service ancillary.
I'm just trying to understand because there's also medical offices closer to the middle, I think, on the corner there.
Here, this is a class.
There's one in the middle.
There's also.
There's one right here.
Yeah, right here, yeah.
But that it, that, so he's, someone would have to come in completely change that. You guys, I'm pointing to seventeen twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, that one fronts on the other street, Bishop Delmonte.
I think that one does face on Catalina also if I.
I'm just trying to understand what applies to. So it applies to medical offices as well? Even if you're saying that there's other things that already.
Yeah, office offices as a.
That's not according to their.
As a general rule or as a general category are all subject to the first part of this.
Okay.
The existing regulation and then um specific to professional office, which is taking up the spaces that are. Fronting right on, you know, kind of in the heart of Catalina Avenue are those the ones that are that are now being. Identified clearly and explicitly to not be allowed on that ground.
It's about thirty percent of if it's fifteen are are offices of some sort. Already there and that's what it's going to be limited to.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we not have a ratio figure on this from the study and the survey?
We, you know, it sounds like we've got, what what's the total number, Shono?
It looks like there's about thirty.
Total number of.
Like forty, forty pink things on there and there's if it's fifteen.
C two P T.
So I can expand. So I have a site visit Excel sheet.
But you can remember that all of the these shops can go to the back or they can go to the second floor. So it's not like they're being restricted from being in that area.
Exactly.
If there's a second floor, because there's not.
To Chair Craig's point, there's, did you say there's three vacant spaces currently in the area?
That when I draw by, I mean, scientifically about three.
Scientific. Uh, are you guys aware of any professional service companies or medical uh companies that are trying to? Lease one of those spaces?
No, not aware, no.
Okay, so it doesn't seem like people are clamoring to make it to change the whole feel of the area.
Yeah, no, no, we just, you know, when a when a use gets in there, that's not a preferred or highest and best use. Per the policy of the general plan for that area, they're going to be there for, you know, they're going to just take up. Real estate, you know, right in the middle of the pedestrian core that isn't, you know, it's it's number three on the list, if you will.
Yeah.
Oh, it's all here and where is in the resolution, Redondo Beach Municipal Code permits offices, including government professional and medical offices. Within C two P D zones. It's in the resolution, you guys, on page one. It says it, it, the definition is in there and um. I think what we, I mean, if people, the it sounds like everybody just wants to clean the language up.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing.
So let's just go to that part of it.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe go back to the ordinance.
Sure.
Um, Chair, I think we we need to see who up here thinks that's a good idea to clean language up, who wants.
Sean, do you want me to?
I think everybody wants to clean the language up.
Real estate buildings to stay there. I think we need to take kind of like an idea of where we stand before we do something nobody wants.
Doesn't want it cleaned up.
Yeah, well, I guess, yeah, I may, did.
Does anyone here not want to clean up?
I think we have some more questions over here first.
I've been waiting since the start when you said I was next.
Well, it was taken.
You went first. Go right ahead, Mr. Boswell.
I forgot my question. Okay, so you you said in your presentation that um that. This prior practice isn't been, is is no longer supported. How long has it? How how long have you been acting as though this was already passed?
Sean, you would be able to answer that pretty much my time.
The last year and a half.
So in the last year and a half or so, you have, have you had any of these kinds of of? Second floor offices trying to get onto the first floor?
There might have been one or two. It's not, it's not a.
Not a stampede.
It's not, yeah, it's not.
It's more of a, you know, uh, let's preserve it while we can.
Yes, it's a rule.
Interesting about the medical offices, I don't know if anybody remembers about five or six years ago, Manhattan Beach. Said, okay, no more medical offices. It's about all we've got anymore. These these companies can come in and afford just about any rent and guess who winds up paying it? So they've actually already addressed this situation, but way too late. So I think instead of targeting architects and real estate, it's the medical offices that are are uh. Uh, the primary culprits to change the flavor of this part of the city. So I think that needs to be an emphasis, absolutely no ma, and maybe no medical offices at all. If you've got thirty percent of of Riviera Village is is medical, that's kind of a lot. So, uh, but that said. Has anybody asked, did did anyone poll the landlords, the landowners as to what their opinion on this would be? What do they prefer?
We did send notices to all the property owners.
We did, and we did receive a couple of calls and emails. Um, I had two emails forwarded to me. Those are the two emails that are that are um included. They're attached to the administrative report.
That are in the in the paperwork that we got.
Correct, those are.
Those are landlords?
Um, I I don't know the relationship of them, but they had very specific questions pertaining.
One of them's a property owner and the other one's a leaseholder.
Yeah, and then I I did receive three other phone calls just from, and I apologize, I don't know their relationship. I believe one was an employee of one of the medical offices at the southern end of southern of South Catalina Avenue, excuse me. So I was able to connect with them and answer questions, but their questions really related about how they were. Uh, how this proposed amendment would affect their lot in particular. Um, and then I also want to state that one of the questions actually was about a proposed conditional use permit. That's not attached to this amendment and they were, they were just curious if if those two were working in concert. They were a tenant on South Catalina Avenue.
Oh, yeah, the sixteen.
So in your, in your survey, um, did any of the. Did you get responses from any of the retail or the the village type, uh, preferred village type businesses? Did you get any input from the kind of businesses that you want to keep there and and encourage more to come in?
Uh, well, I I wouldn't classify it as a survey. I would, I would just say that it was the noticing that we are required to do from the municipal code. Um, I I don't know if the individuals that I spoke to were associated with retail. Um, uses. I did have one, I believe he may have been a property manager who inquired. If the barber shop that's located within their lot would still be a compliant use, but they were actually in a C four P D zone. So they would not be subject to this proposed amendment.
So would personal care, barber shops, beauty shops and stuff be allowed? I would, I assume nail shops?
They they'd be permitted.
Yeah, okay. Um, so the the vacancy in that whole area is only three spots. So there is high demand for it or people are just not leaving. People are not.
Yeah, I think the.
People are not ending their leases and moving on or going out of business.
The businesses are thriving for the most part. So, yeah, there's not a lot. I mean, things are, the restaurants will flip. Um, you know, but a lot of the stores down there are, have been there for. Maybe decades.
Uh huh, okay. So I'm just curious with the general falling demand for uh brick and mortar retail visits. You know, are you experiencing anything like that? Because the Galleria sure is.
Yeah, you know, the, I think, you know.
That doesn't matter.
The energy of the village is very high and the traffic is high. Uh, so the the synergy of those uses is really.
But the uh, but the eventual goal of of having a uh, walking, biking, uh, retail, sort of a window shopping type of a district. Seems like real estate offices would be compatible with that as long as it doesn't become all real estate. I mean, you could do a a real estate office situation like you do with massage parlors on Artesia. It can't be more than a thousand feet or whatever apart. So, you know, I I can't ever remember going to a Realtor and it not being a storefront on the ground floor. With real estate listings in the window and people walk by and they see them. I mean, even on vacation in other countries, that's where real estate offices are.
Yeah, no, and absolutely. And the remainder of the village, all the C three P D and the C four P D, this pro, this uh. You know, prohibition, if you will, does not apply. They can, they can go right to the storefront. So all the ancillary streets that that, you know, dead end or lead to Catalina, all those streets. They can put the offices right on the front. So the this restriction doesn't apply. This is just limited to Catalina Avenue.
How far is this, just to take that example a little bit? So what about uh massage parlors there? Is that permitted? Is gyms permitted? Are liquor stores permitted? Smoke shops permitted?
There is. I mean, we've got that, we go by the land use table, so there's a whole list of uses that are permitted. This use office is also permitted. It's just restricted.
Gun range?
I don't think that's on our list.
We're looking for a spot, right?
But I think the point is taken that.
Yeah.
That one section is what they're trying to control. And there's so many other streets that come off of there that go, you have Trader Joe's, which is kind of like another little hub there. And then there's all these streets that come off of it, which have the professional buildings. We already have that. We've got a four story, three story building there that has a ton of stuff on the second, right there. Across from Trader Joe's in that parking lot.
Any vacancy in that building?
I don't know, but the point being is that there are plenty of places where people are walking that are still, they're professional buildings.
And those will be grandfathered in, right?
Well, no, we're not talking about that, Commissioner Boswell. We're just talking about that once, it's two blocks is all. The people, they can.
There are four professional offices on that street, right?
They want to open up a real estate office and they don't have one in Riviera, okay? They want to open one up. They would just simply go around the corner to this, they're just looking at two blocks.
You can only rent vacant space. If the vacancy rate is that low and you have a real estate office and you want to be in that part of town. Because that's where most of your savings is.
It's only four blocks.
If you can't get one somewhere that's not on Catalina, but there's a really great spot on Catalina. In your real estate office, seems like like that could be allowed. Now, if you're a medical office, maybe not.
Well, what.
All right, I I got a little bit of insight on this. My office was uh right across the street on PCH there, that Riviera that used to be the language school. We had to get out of there. We looked all through the village to see about space and there was some space. It's not desirable for businesses. Parking's very expensive, hard to get. It's not really the ideal place for it. So I do get the idea behind. That's just go a block another way. It's easier to park, it's cheaper. And the other thing is, no, office space is not a premium now. People are still working from home at less and less, but it's cheap. The place we got now in Torrance is a third the price of what we were paying for there. So I I I don't, I think we're trying to make a problem that isn't there by trying to limit this. I agree with Commissioner Heskey with this, that that is just not needed to have that available for office space. There's so many other places to go that would be better for that.
But it's part of the discussion. It's not that I'm promoting it. It's part of uncovering all of the factors and the variables. That go into this and the reasons for the decisions.
And the other thing.
Understanding that when one person is talking, another person shouldn't talk over them.
Well, I was going to help you with something.
That's what my wife says. That's how it goes. And I have to say, what do you want?
Well, what I was saying is you, the big part of the ACAP is that if you're going to, okay, so there's a huge parking lot across from Trader Joe's. And the idea is that you park and then you walk, okay, or you, whatever, you bike there, you walk there. If you drive, you park and you walk. I'm just trying to tell you that it's not like Catalina is the only walking. People are walking all over that place. They're they're going to Trader Joe's. They're walking on every one of those streets because there's coffee shops everywhere.
And I believe every word of that.
Okay.
I believe every word of that. You didn't have to, you don't have to hard sell me.
There's also restaurants up and down and boutiques up and down those other streets.
Yeah, Avenue I has restaurants up and down.
Yeah.
The point I wanted to make is just to enter into the discussion of, are we really sure that all of these businesses? That are declared second floor businesses, should they really be included in the second floor category? Is, and I and I say specifically, real estate offices should be discussed further. Because I've never seen them not on the ground floor and I and I do see them as part of the window shopping experience and the walking experience. I think that is probably just as much a attraction to walk down a street as walking past a Pilate studio. That doesn't have its windows grayed out.
Um, yeah, I to follow up with you and I I tend to agree. I mean, granted, I'm in the business, but I. I think that real estate offices do draw a lot of foot traffic. So contrary to what we're, I think we're looking at. I mean, the, you walk by a real estate office nowadays, we have electronic signs, they walk through. A lot of people stop in and 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 ask questions about it. They are coming in shopping. There there then, you know, I I I've had offices, you know, bring the clients to the office. We then go out and get a bite to eat afterwards.
I got, and that's, and I have a friend that, that's exactly how they bought a house in Palos Verdes. They had issues with their neighbor. Uh, they were very unsatisfied with what was going on with the new neighbor. And the, my friend happened to be uh down in Riviera Village and saw a picture of a house. And says, that's where I would like to live. By the way, where is it? Well, they now live there.
Right, and and the thing is like, well, the, and to answer your, Mr. Scully's point too, I mean, it's something that like, I know that the. Couple of letters we got, one of the offices has been there for, I think, almost five years. So some of these offices have been there for a while. And that's why I asked the question, is there some problem that's being caused by these these offices being there? Because I think they contribute a lot to the uh, guys, I'm sorry, I'm just, again. I think they do contribute, I mean, real estate offices contribute a lot to the city. If you look at the, just in transfer tax alone, the Redondo in our budget, we get about. Two, two, almost three million dollars a year in transfer tax. And for those that don't, you know, when you sell a home, you pay a tax directly to the city. It's a two dollars and twenty cents per thousand dollars of sale. So you're selling a, you know, two million dollar house is about four grand that goes to the city every single time it comes through. And that's not even including the secondary type of fees that come to the city where someone's going to remodel their house or redevelop it. They pay a quimby fee. That's another fifteen thousand dollars that goes to the city revenue. So uh, these are significant money generation factors for the city that I think are really, that we should consider. It's not just your, you know, walking around and you see a real estate office. I mean, they, uh, most of the agents, they don't work out of their offices. So they're not taking up parking, but we are getting people to come down, look and then want to move in the community. And then, like I said, they look, they come down, shop, look, they, you know, take, go across the street, get a drink or or get a bite to eat at one of the restaurants over there. So it generates a lot of traffic. So I I kind of, I differ a little bit with the interpretation, saying that they they're not generating the same kind of traffic. Sure, they they may not generate as much traffic as one of the restaurants where they're having dollar drink. traffic as one of the restaurants where they're having dollar drink night or something perhaps, you know, but then again, they are generating a lot of long-term revenue for the city. So, and since we're talking three of them that are in this area here, I don't know if they're causing any real problem, but part of the concern I had was with the, if we're going to be like, put a, you know, we're gonna allow these to be grandfathered in. Some of these properties are owned by the companies that purchased them. So real estate offices, companies do change periodically. So, you know, company I was with, we used to be part of a big franchise and now we're an independent company. What if that company wants to sell their offices to another company? Are they gonna have a problem doing that now? Are they gonna be basically having their properties now devalued because, you know, it's a real estate office, but now it's gonna be turned into something else if it changes. Do a little bit of remodeling to it. So we're now causing a secondary impact on this. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking more of like, well, we only got three of them here now, if we're gonna, since we're focusing on real estate offices, why don't we just, I don't know, put a cap like we did on smoke shops? Because this thing came out of a smoke shop discussion, essentially, the council. Maybe you say, okay, well, we've got X amount on the village now, let's cap it at that. If one of those companies closes down, goes out, another one can come in, there's no more. So we put a, we put a limit on how many more that can come in, which seems to be the the issue I think that we're concerned about. We don't have twenty real estate offices open up where we have three now. Maybe just put a cap on it, I don't know.
We could use one of the cross streets and make it all real estate.
In, in, in the Catalina area there, I think there's three, there's the state properties, the.
Did you say you counted four?
Yes, and I could bring that spreadsheet. Off the top of my head, I know there's the Beach Cities Brokers.
She brokers.
There's, I believe there's, on the corner, there's one building. Thank you. There's one that's closer to that crosswalk as, as you walk further south. It's in the mid-block with restaurants on both sides. The name escapes me at the moment. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I'm happy to bring that spreadsheet up for reference.
Yeah, right here.
Yes, there's Beach Cities, Sotheby's Estates. That's only three, I only saw those four.
Oh, there's an architecture firm.
There you go, that have pipes.
So the architect, the architecture firm is actually, it doesn't face South Catalina, but I included it because it is zoned and would be applicable for this proposed amendment. But it's on, it's on the side, it's on the north facing side of that street.
Oh, right.
It doesn't face onto Catalina, it's in that same building as the, the business that you referenced.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, it's just a, because it's a multiple suite building, yeah. Okay, yeah. So that's kind of like where I was thinking, I, I just, I was a little surprised to see that. Like I said, the IRS, when I turned in my ten ninety-nine and the IRS, I'm, I'm considered a service business, as a Realtor, so I, I was a little surprised to say that they weren't service oriented or service related. So, anyway. Anyway, there's some thoughts on that. You know, if we want to put a cap on it, that might be a way of doing it like we do with smoke shops. And then that way, the current owners aren't going to be penalized if they sell their properties later, if they want to continue that use. Anyway, Commissioner Conroy.
Yeah, first of all, I think the, the market would create its own cap, meaning one of the big reasons real estate offices, for example, wanting to be in there is to have their window shopping and, and and you're gonna lose that if it just turns into a street of real estate offices. So that's gonna self-correct. But I would just say, we can obviously continue discussion, but I would, I just want to say that I would, I would be willing to adopt the, the staff recommendation with the following amendments. First, three amendments, first that we clarify that the existing ground floor professional offices are expressly grandfathered and may continue operations without disruption. Two, that staff distinguishes between an administrative office where people just come to work and then go home versus a sales service office where people are coming and being, you know, part of the pedestrian traffic to get us, to get a service. And then the last one, if, if the purpose is to give it a village feel to where, well, let me just say, I would rather have a financial office there or an accounting office or a real estate office than have vacant storefronts. So if the problem we're trying to solve is that there's not enough availability for retail and restaurants, then I would say that we should look at, if we do impose additional restrictions, that we take a look twelve, eighteen months from now and see if there's an increase in vacant storefronts.
Mr. Gaddis.
I, I don't have the language from the nineteen ninety-two general plan that describes this preference. Do we have that handy at all?
Do you have that policy handy? I think you quoted.
My, my feeling about this is the reason they clump the restaurants together.
Exactly.
In one place. Las Vegas gets bigger because it gets bigger, you know, the more hotels and casinos and attractions you put in that place, the more people flock in there, the better the business is for everybody. And it's, it's like a food court. Somebody's hungry or they want to hit a few bars, right, you know, and they're out with friends and their friends are in from out of town or something like that. There's a place they can park the car or take an Uber to, you know, ride share to, and there's a whole variety of things. And I find, you know, I'm doing that. When I go down there to entertain guests, because we'll go to a restaurant, we don't have reservations, there's a wait, well, there's a really good place that's a couple doors down. This place is, you know, we'll go down to this other place, it'll be just fine. And then it's an hour wait, oh, okay, we'll grab a drink across the street. You know what I mean? That kind of thing. So that clumping of uses of bars, restaurants, retail, all in one place, especially, we're talking, as you say, about basically a little over a block. It's like two blocks, really. Of just one street. And so it, it seems like, and I understand the grandfathering of, of existing service businesses. But I think there is a big advantage to clumping these things all together. And people know the Riviera Village, not because of Trader Joe's, they know of it because of this cluster of restaurants and bars on Catalina. So I would say whatever we can do to make that more successful is a really good idea. And so.
And that's, and that's the best point made yet, that supports what we're trying to do here. Because like I was saying while you were talking, there is actual economic theory that supports that. That's why we have restaurant rows. That's why we have antique shops all on the same street. Why we, why back in the eighties, Melrose in Hollywood was known as thrift shop row.
Now decorated.
Different now. It's still the same clothes, they just say they're new. But these, but, but the theory is that, is that you're, those shops will each do better in a restaurant row type of situation than on their own block all by themselves.
Right, that's established.
Because of exactly what Rob is describing, the human experience of wanting to go somewhere where no matter what happens, there are alternatives.
Ooh, I think we have something.
Why there are malls.
Yeah, and so, you know, I, I say let's, let's do what it takes to to make this thing stronger at what it's best at right now and how it attracts people down there to do what they want to do, as opposed to.
We're all kind of agreeing. I agree with Commissioner Conroy's amendments and any, and, and Commissioner Craig, sure, Craig, you were mentioning maybe strengthening the grandfathering and I think that a maximum number makes sense and maybe we can.
So right now, are there three or four real estate offices there?
Per, per the record that I have, it was four in June. I can off the top of my head recall three, but I believe the fourth may have been the architecture that's on the northern side of the lot that does not face South Catalina Avenue itself.
And of the eleven other professional offices, things which were, but basically most all of them were medical of some sort, right? Are those, the, the ones that are all the way down at the corner of Palaceford is Boulevard, I believe it is, right? Those seem to be, there, there are a lot of nameplates on basically two buildings. Did you count each one of those nameplates as, as an, as an office? Or did you count this cluster of six nameplates in the building as being one professional, professional services office?
I counted it by the address.
Okay.
So not by the number of nameplates. I just use the address because.
Um, okay.
You know, Rob, that's almost separate, so it's.
Well, we're not just, we're not just trying to limit real estate offices. I think they said professional services offices.
I can place it.
That's an example, right.
Rob, would you be in favor if, say, we had four currently, that we had like maybe a cap of four?
I would say cap it off at whatever the number is right now. We don't know exactly what that number is right now.
Yeah, and then in the future, we could look at that again, if we need to.
Yeah, if we need to. I'm just trying to figure out where these other sort of eleven.
That's what I was trying to figure too. Commissioner, I have that, I have this spreadsheet on the screen.
Okay, so this is the, so the nine, one, yeah.
Well, there's only one vacant.
Looks like ten.
Ten, ten on Catalina.
On Catalina, with Catalina addresses.
Half of them are medical.
And one of them says just potential.
We can't count the potential ground floor office, can we? Because it's vacant, could become a restaurant or boutique.
Has no ground floor.
That's, that's Catalina. Is that counting, or is this, these other streets counting as well?
This is only within the C, this is only within the C two P D.
There's ten, five medical, three, real estate, one architecture.
Okay, see, see what I'm saying.
That seems, and a potential ground floor office.
There's one, correct. So there's one building that doesn't have the street frontage.
No, they're counting.
Typical of that area. It's enclosed, it doesn't have large windows and it's difficult to differentiate.
No, 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 but and then this one is basically, it is nineteen twenty-one.
You're saying it's on the corner of Catalina and something?
The one that I'm referring to is, I believe it's one seven two zero. Yes. I believe it's north, there's a medical building on the corner and it is the one to the north.
So is it a building? I, I'm still not picturing it. My son's ortho, orthodontist was on the second floor of a building down there and I'm thinking that might be it. Is this a building that some future tenant might do tenant improvement such that they put big windows in it? Is it, is it a building where that would be possible?
I would say that would be possible. I, I don't necessarily.
Because if it's not, if it's not possible, then that building shouldn't, should, should be allowed to have whatever they want. Because it's not really a walk-in, you know, retail type of building, is it?
Correct.
Could be limited to maybe a gym or something.
That's correct.
Or a real estate.
Also, if it is a current ground floor, street facing office, it would be allowed to continue to have that use as a non-conforming use within the code.
Right. Commissioner Hazeltine, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. I have a question. So with this spreadsheet that you have up, are we talking, these are all potential that if they were to move out, you would recommend putting something else in, right? On all of these places?
Some, let's talk about the medical office. The way that, and this is with existing ordinance. There's a lot of those offices that are not fronting, they don't have frontage, they're on a plaza, they're off, right?
Nineteen seventeen, nineteen nineteen, so to have multiple offices, there's zero frontage.
Well, they also face on a whole other, they face on a feeder street.
Not really.
So those medical offices can come and go.
It's like a parking lot.
Where my daughter lives.
It is a feeder street.
Nineteen seventeen does not. This one does.
This whole place.
And this one completely does not.
But the, this is not like a drive-through, but these are two different addresses.
They are two different.
We're splitting hairs here. Are we talking about this whole list? Then if, let's say that each one of these over the next ten years were to empty out, you'd be encouraging a restaurant or retail store is what you're saying?
We would, we would encourage, we would, we would apply the ordinance as it's written and no the, you know, those real estate offices wouldn't be, another real estate office wouldn't move in.
Okay, okay. That list on Avenue, on Catalina.
On Catalina.
Okay, okay. I, I have to tell you, I kind of support that because the only thing that, what we're talking about, so, so why would we say, well, real estate offices are okay, but medical offices are not, should those turn over? You know, what I'm saying. So I'm kind of liking the way you guys have been doing it. I don't see why, because it's not, they're not going to turn over right away all tomorrow.
No, no. And they can continue as long as they can stay in business.
Yeah.
So you would be in favor of them eventually, through attrition, there being no offices along Catalina in that area?
Ground floor offices.
Except for the end that we're talking about, because I had, I used to have a dentist there. To me, it makes sense because that kind of does, you can turn right there and go down and actually get down into the
The next street over there.
Torrance apartment building area where all those apartment buildings are, by turning right just past the medical buildings.
Yeah, it's a drive-through.
Yeah. So that to me kind of faces that more than it does Catalina.
Yeah, there's no frontage to Catalina.
Yeah, so I don't see including that in there and yet that is a Catalina address, right? So it doesn't make a lot of sense, but, but all that other, I think we're kind of thinking that something is going to happen in the near future and it really isn't. It's going to take, if ever.
I'm not thinking that.
I, I think, I think they're talking about so that no new potential restaurants are turned into professional offices. That's basically what we're talking about approving here, right?
Correct, yes.
Right.
Well, we're at twenty-two percent now, if you take nine out of forty, that are this and that, we're okay with. I, I feel okay with it, so, and if they'll go away eventually and it will be a hundred percent preferred uses.
So what's the recommendation from staff, leaving the resolution as is?
I still think that professional services is really unclear and I think clarifying that is, would be amendment I would be behind. But otherwise, I'd go with the staff recommendation.
Yeah. Sean, can you do that so that, for example, there's a I think we saw a Pilates studio down there by between one, a couple of the restaurants. That's not included in this because that's considered.
Yeah, that's considered personal improvement services.
Okay, so a medical building or a doctor's office or whatever could move out of one of those because there's a few of them there and a Pilates studio could move in with your resolu, with our resolution.
Correct, correct.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to entertain the idea to open up for public comment because we have some speakers in the room. So anyone turn any speaker cards, Jamal?
Oh, yeah. Okay, this is for, there's one of each.
Okay.
J one, J two.
Okay. First speaker is Rick Edler. Please say your name so they could record it and go right ahead.
Excellent. My name is Rick Edler. I own and operate this to Sotheby's International Realty, which is eighteen oh one South Catalina. I also live at two oh eight Cali Miramar, although walking distance, don't frequently walk to work. Couple of points I'd like to kind of just bring up. A couple of things were said and I thought there was a couple of points that I'd like to make. And I'm going to be very clear. I'm speaking against my best interests. What I mean by that is if you guys adopt this, I have a brokerage, I have a real estate office, I'm not having more competition because as long as I stay in business, I get to stay there. When you start limiting demand options, it affects supply and demand and it has unintended consequences and I hope that the commission takes in that into consideration. I'm going to use my office as an example. We have two hundred square feet of retail, as you guys would prefer to call it, with six thousand square feet supporting it. That six thousand square feet, which is the back of the first floor, part of the second floor and part of the third floor, allows us to operate our brokerage and meet with clients or do notaries or consult with them on the first level at storefront level. The signage works very well for real estate brokerage. If we didn't have it, we wouldn't pay the ridiculous rent to be in that particular area. If we are not able to have a brokerage at that point, we would simply not find that location advantageous. If the brokerages start leaving, I think real estate, one of the three basic needs, water, shelter and food. Food, we have lots of and enjoy doing that. If you start limiting that and you have less demand, you might have vacancies that show up. And if you have limited the use that could go in there, then you will. then you will inadvertently hinder the owners to have those buildings, thus they don't continue to improve it, thus it pushes backwards. So I would intend and hope that you guys would take that into consideration as you limit the use. Also, specifically focusing on real estate, little dear to me, I find that we actually are a good part of the community. We've been there thirteen years. It's been a good cooperation with the city, and we feel we bring a lot to the community. I have spent way too much money at Rainbow Sushi. I've spent way too much money at Craftsman. We do come to the office and do frequently walk to Hi-Fi or Offset to get a coffee in the morning, so we don't have to drive around in the opportunity. So even though it might be offices, first floor, second or third, you are frequenting the restaurants around there, and that has been quite successful. I can see why a financial institution would not want to be there because people don't put their tax returns in the window.
Motion to extend.
Motion to extend?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Please continue.
Thank you. So like a financial advisor would probably not put their pictures in the window of their great returns that they had done for their CPA clients, for people to cruise, but they would not find that as a good location for them to open their business, therefore they wouldn't seek it. If there is more demand for restaurants, I do think that the rates would go up. And real estate office myself would take a look at evaluation, say we can't afford it, and we go in there. But the diversity which that area creates, and we don't take parking on the street, which can be used for restaurants to have outdoor parking, seating, which has been a great boom for that area. If you look at other cities, and we have thirteen offices in different cities, all storefront, all main streets, all have the same kind of exposure. It works to help the community and be aware of that. In closing, basically, the unintended consequences of limiting the demand may affect it in a ways you don't see down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have no more speaker cards, so.
Anyone online?
We have no E attendees online.
Okay. So our next step is to continue discussion or?
I have a question. What's the physical distance of this street that we're, this area that we're trying to turn into just a retail restaurant?
I think it would be helpful if I can bring the map up. It is the stretch of South Catalina Avenue, bordering on Avenue I to the north and Palos Verdes Boulevard to the south. And then within the C two P D zone to which this proposed amendment would be applicable, it does collect three portions of lots directly to the east before you reach the triangular-shaped parking structure. You could see there are two C two P D lots to the right of one seven two eight. I can make this a little larger, might be easier to see. And. It's the northern portion of one eight one five via El Prado to the south, and then one seven one nine, I believe that address. Bear with me one moment, I have it written down.
That's a strange one.
On Vista Del Mar and Via El Prado, it's, it's three lots here, immediately to the east of South Catalina Avenue.
So the question was, what's the distance?
The physical distance.
What's the mileage from one end to the other of this district?
It's like a couple hundred yards, I think.
Do we know? Is it a half a mile?
I don't know the physical distance.
It's a very small space, right?
It is a very small space.
So the, the issue that this gentleman brought up about limiting, you know, limiting types of demand, although valid in a, in, in, in a larger economic commercial zone, it's just a few blocks. I don't know that, that that's a big deal. That said, I still think there should be a carve-out for real estate offices because they are probably one of the main things that I know when I'm walking down the street, I'm going to stop and look at the cool houses that they've got, even if I already know. There's no way I'm going to buy them. I'm going to stop and I'm going to look, and I'm going to, and it's going to perhaps create some kind of activity in that area. And then my wife turns around and looks across the street and says, hey, where did that restaurant come from? Let's go eat over there. And I said, but let's just go to this bar over here and drink instead. And there you have it. Money is being spent because we stopped at a real estate office to look at pictures of nice homes. When we've been in, in foreign countries and walking through cities, like little towns, villages that have a real estate office, you'll walk right by the cheesy tourist knickknack shop, but you will spend twenty minutes looking at the cool houses that are in that neighborhood. Therefore, say, wow, now how do you convert that currency to? So it's, it's probably a better use for, for the ultimate goal of a village-type, walking, window-shopping type of commercial district than a Pilates or a barber shop or a nail shop or a donut shop. I think that there, and, and maybe the, the desire to make sure it doesn't take over the neighborhood could be addressed by having restrictions. Well, we will allow four in this area, or they can't be more than a thousand feet apart or five hundred feet apart or whatever. We've done this with businesses in the past. There's no reason why we can't, not only grandfather in the existing three, but maybe say we'll allow four. And if somebody wants to, a real estate company wants to lease space on the ground floor of a building, and that makes four, okay, that's it. I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas here, but I think that's the one business. I mean, nobody stops to look in the window at an architectural firm. Nobody. There's a monitor facing away from the window. But in, in an accounting firm, my God, don't go in there. Do not go in there. But a, a real estate, real estate office, like I was saying before, a friend of mine bought a house because he saw a picture of the house, a house that was so cool, he could not not buy it. And they were, they weren't even thinking of moving. They were just very irritated with their next door, their new next door neighbors who wrecked their fence when they trimmed their trees. So they're renting that house out now to, I won't even tell you, but the bad neighbors are sorry, they moved. But now they live on a really cool house with a great ocean view that they didn't have before, and it's, you know, a nineteen thirties-built, you know, classical home and built along the hillside in Palos Verdes. They would have never known about it had they not seen it. So there you go. I think there should be some carve-out for real estate.
Okay, so we have a opinion from Doug. We, I know we had some other opinions floating around about professional office definitions. Is that something we still want to clarify with it? Any more discussion about?
Well, the planning department seems clear on what it is, so if they're clear, I'm sort of clear now. So I, I, I don't necessarily need any more definition there.
So you're okay with their, their proposed language with regard to that? Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else feel like, I, I agree with Mr. Boswell. I think that, again, you know, having familiar with, familiarity with the business, I think that maybe some kind of a carve-out, and so leaving a professional service and a carve-out for the real estate offices may, may make some sense. We can come back and look at it again later if we need to, but that's just my thoughts on it. Anyone else have an opinion on either one or?
So that's not just grandfathered in, that's saying that this is going to be three or four are permitted there.
Well, I think that accomplishes the same thing. It's like grandfathering, but the concern I have with just grandfathering a minute is that, you know, some of these businesses own these properties and, you know, if it transfers hands later in the future, then suddenly their property is now worth less.
Well, again, they, they actually can, just a point of clarification, a legal non-conforming use can continue as it is. And if another non-conforming use of the same category can move into that particular location as well, if that space isn't vacant for more than two years.
Well, there's that, but I think there was something else too, if there's any kind of modification to the building.
Yeah, yeah.
So if they modify, if they.
Structural alterations with that, then that would relinquish that, that grandfather clause. So that, that's why I was thinking either that or just having the spot.
Well, they would come back for approval, right?
They would, but then it would.
Yeah, goes planning commission design review.
Yes, so non-conforming uses are permitted to make structural alterations that are ordered by the city's chief building official or that are reviewed and approved by the planning commission through the planning commission design review procedure.
Right.
Well, that would be about ten percent. Is, is, are we looking at a carve-out of four? I think, I think I would be okay with that.
How about if we do this so that we can get this going one way or the other? How about if we vote on moving to accept the resolution as presented by staff? Resolution number twenty twenty-five zero nine P C R O eight, and vote and see how that goes.
Okay, so is that your motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor of carry.
We're voting on it as stated with no.
As is.
As it is.
No modifications.
Okay.
Why would we? Well, did she just call it her vote? She just wants to clarify that, so can we have a roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Light?
As is, okay. At this point, I'm okay with that. I.
Commissioner Boswell?
No.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Commissioner Gaddis?
Yes.
Commissioner Conroy?
No.
Commissioner Hazelton?
Yes.
Chairperson Craig?
No. So the motion doesn't carry, so we have another.
Introduce amendments.
Other amendments or?
Yeah.
I guess I could, I think they introduce maybe an amendment to that, that we do do.
Or change.
Maybe, well, the change would be, actually would be a change.
Did you want to, we could put the, you want to improve the definition? Is that the idea? Or you wanted to grandfather in the real estate only?
Yeah, because it seems like the, my, I guess my thoughts again were, you know, what we were talking about earlier, do a, do some kind of a carve-out because I think that the, the staff report was kind of singling out real estate companies in general.
But how would, what would be, okay, so sell me on this chair. What's the difference? Why are we prioritizing a real estate agent versus a dentist, for example?
I, yeah.
I would beat that to death, come on.
Yeah. Well, I think what we covered, I mean, basically, I don't think dentist office delivered, dental office is going to generate traffic. I think real estate offices do, for all the reasons.
I go to the dentist and then I get a cup of coffee.
Not necessarily, I mean, not if you got a shot, probably. You'll be, you'll be, you'll have to wear a bib.
To, to her point, I, I agree, and the more heavy-handed we are on trying to affect the market, we're going to, we may inadvertently cause more problems than we're solving. I would be, I'm definitely open to a cap, whether it be a hard number or a percentage of the addresses along that corridor. But I would be more inclined to open it to professional service providers rather than real estate. And to the gentleman that spoke point, like, and as well as people on this commission, it probably wouldn't be a great idea to open up an, an accounting firm or a different service, you know? So I think the market would solve that problem. I'd be open to a cap on professional service providers.
So if we lump those together, then we're not talking just the four, we're talking the eleven or fourteen that are there now.
Or a total cap of four overall.
Yeah, we could have fifteen of them now, and we could lose all but four or fifteen percent or whatever we decide through attrition, but that there's always some element of professional services.
It was only nine there. Am I missing something? Where did the fifteen come from?
Maybe I missed.
Yeah, there's.
On Catalina, there's only nine.
There might be.
One without windows.
Right, we don't know what that tenth one is. We.
I'm not sure where that.
It's always closed up.
I would, I would be okay with that, that there would be, I think a percentage of those that have that makes more sense. And what's the right percentage right now? It's about, if it's nine out of forty, it's twenty-two percent.
Maybe it's a twenty percent cap or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I.
You don't want to be more than that, so would it be?
Yeah, it's a lower number.
Twenty percent? You know, everything there that stays, they have that permission, but if it goes below twenty percent, then one could come in.
I think Commissioner Gaddis's point, it's just two blocks that we're looking at, literally two blocks. And I think his point is well-taken in that you go to a restaurant, you have to wait thirty minutes, you cross the street to the bar, you, oh, we've got thirty minutes, let me go buy a shirt. It's kind of, I, I'm not even sure we need to be as high as twenty percent with that.
Well, while we're waiting, let's go look at the houses in the window at the real estate shop.
And meanwhile, you're walking by a gym that you can't walk in and workout in without a subscription or a membership. I mean, there's other things.
If you look at the amount of people that go there and then come out and then, and then get food, that's, that's high.
Put those calories right back on.
So I guess the question, so we have, so the question is whether we do an overall cap, or I mean, a percentage cap is to.
Maybe it's ten percent. I mean, we're currently at roughly twenty or just over twenty.
Yeah, if it's nine out of forty, twenty-two percent.
That's too many, and we'd like to see that number come down.
Right, because if it was ten percent.
That would be about five.
Yeah, because, because.
About half of what they got now.
Yes, so as I understand, so the, the current staff, the recommendation is that we put no cap, essentially. So we're, we're now coming and proposing.
It's basically zero.
Yeah, so we're saying zero, so now we're saying, well, based on what's there now and kind of merging together these type of professional uses, we're thinking a percentage now. So we're talking whatever percentage that might be. So the existing ones are grandfathered in, and we're thinking a percentage to be some whatever number.
Percentage. Because once you start talking about percentages, you have to ask yourself, should we really be talking about percentage of square footage available for lease in the entire street?
Saying how much of it is.
Yeah, kind of quantify it.
Well, and, and of course, you don't know what I was about to say, do you?
Yeah, but you say five sentences.
Why do you keep interrupting me?
Okay, please, let's continue.
So you, you, you want to, I mean, go back to the basic thing. The goal is to encourage a village shopping, walk-street, window-shopping type district. An architectural firm, accounting firm does not add to that. A real estate office does. The fact that you've got other businesses that are allowed that are less likely to attract window shopping, like Pilates and barber shops and nail shops, means that, that it's, it's pretty clear that a real estate office is a much bigger benefit to the eventual goal of making this the window-shopping district of the South Bay. Okay, to say we should have a limit on that is fine, but I don't think we should be giving those same considerations to ground floor medical offices. When a ground floor medical office loses its lease or leaves, a new medical office can come in, but only be on the second floor or higher. I mean, that way, that frees up even more space for retail and restaurant on ground floors. So you look at these businesses according to their ability to further the goal that the city has for this district. Real estate offices are a positive factor in advancing that goal. Medical offices, dentist offices, orthodontists, chiropractors do not. And as they reach the end of their lease or move out, a new tenant cannot be on that ground floor. But in the case of real estate offices, a new tenant could be up to a maximum of four offices. This doesn't sound to me like it's getting that complicated. It sounds to me like it's an ability, it's a, it's a desire to tweak the, the verbiage to get to the goal that much sooner and that much more effectively.
Okay, you have other comment anywhere?
She was texting me.
Indeed. Well, I guess at this point, so do we have another motion that we'd like to entertain at this point? Anyone like to make a motion? Silence.
I'll move that we adopt staff recommendation with the following amendments. That we clarify that the ground floor professional offices are expressly grandfathered and may continue operation without disruption. That. Future professional services offices will be allowed not to exceed ten percent of the addresses along the corridor. And.
You can actually state a number, because it's a, it's a finite number, so you can actually state a number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever that number, it was a nine or what was the number?
Or, or.
Professional offices is currently at four.
I might recommend to the, we don't have a definition for what you're describing, so I, I, we would need, staff would need to know, what do you, what exactly, what are the exact uses that define?
Professional.
Professional services, right. Professional services, right.
Yes.
And that.
Yeah, sure. Real estate, medical, the one.
Okay, so, so we've got offices and we've got three categories. Administrative, medical, and what is it? Professional?
Professional.
Yes. And if we can, maybe, maybe it would just help real quick to pull, throw those definitions up there.
Sure.
Okay.
And then if we want to go with the number rather than the percentage, that's fine too.
Find that number unless they tear things down and rebuild and readdress.
Roughly half of the number that we have right now is what I'm saying.
So there's B is offices, professional.
Okay.
Sure. So only C is what we're talking about allowing.
Well, we actually.
It's just medical. No, it's B and C then, but that includes.
It includes architectural and engineering.
Engineering.
Cool, my petroleum pipes.
And law, and law offices.
And, and to the grandfathering issue, again, they, they can continue. They, you know, structural alterations, alterations may need to come to the, to this body.
Are you saying we don't need to expressly grandfather the existing ones in?
Yes, no, because it's already, it's already covered.
Then, then, okay, do we know what, what would, what's our current percentage of these, of the properties here that are, that meet this category?
That, that's.
Those are represented within the spreadsheet that I had up a moment ago. I don't know the total percentage that they.
It seems to be nine over forty.
Nine over forty, so like twenty, twenty five percent?
Two percent, twenty two point. They're nine, they're now.
They're nine there now.
Yeah.
So I would be up for, as I'm proposing the amended motion, a number not to exceed four.
Sounds familiar.
And those include medical buildings, et cetera. Yes.
Yes, everything is defined here.
A cap of four.
Okay, no, okay.
Of any kind of office on the ground floor.
Well, you're basically saying, making a mo' medical then.
Yeah.
Because there's five now.
Okay. Yeah. We need to remember what happened in Manhattan Beach. They will buy up every, they will take up every vacant spot available because they can afford that rent.
Well, that, if we have a cap.
Everybody else out.
If we have a cap, then there will only be four of them.
Oh, none of them will be real estate offices which encourage the use.
All medical.
Okay. And medical offices done. That's why I was making the distinction between medical offices and, and real estate offices.
I'm just having a little problem with this. And I don't know legally if it's legal to say only this office, only real estate. You could, you could get sued for that.
That's, that's not true because we did the same thing with smoke shops.
It makes no sense.
Anyway, so.
You could get sued for anything. And if it's discriminatory, I could make a case that as a psychologist, I want that office and you want to do it for real estate. I'm really having trouble with making a carve out just for real estate.
That's why I want to keep it broader.
Because that's basically saying, that's a preferred use, just as good as a restaurant and a bar, but retail.
It's not that they can't be there, it's that they can't be on the ground floor.
Yeah.
Medical office can still be, they just have to be on the ground, can't be on the ground floor.
That was specified in the staff report. That's the only reason why I brought.
No, I understand, I understand that, but I'm just really cautious about this fact. That rubs me the wrong way saying that's the only permissible professional use there.
Because there's a reason, and there's a reason for it.
That's one reason. That's your opinion on that reason. I don't see that as
There's no law.
A compelling reason of why it couldn't be a psychologist office, or if I believed in it, an astrologer's office. I don't, I, you know what, I, I just don't get that.
I agree with you. I don't understand why we would be pulling real estate offices out. I don't understand it.
That's why I would rather go with the broader definition as, as stated here, to a cap of four for that area, which would roughly represent ten percent?
Business offices.
Yeah. Professional service offices. If, if there needs to be additional distinction, again, I'm not for administrative offices where people only come to work and then they go home. But, but we'll keep it broad in, in my version.
Well, do you want to say the professional services is kind of how we were kind of, I guess that includes a little bit more of that, I guess.
We have the definitions.
Yeah, it's right there.
These are the terms you work with.
For those, yeah, for those definitions. Cap of four. I guess that's really what my, that's what it comes down to.
We, we keep the, the recommendation or the, the ordinance, revised ordinance as is, but then we, you're recommending there's an addition, some additional language that would allow for four.
For four.
Category.
Four cap.
Cap of four.
It'll come down to four through attrition, but there will always be the four.
Be there legally, not, and not subject to that, to the provision that we're proposing.
That's, yes, yes, that's what.
So you're wanting, you're, you're kind of saying you want, you're okay with four storefronts to be.
Yes.
Office.
And the market will determine whether it's a real estate office or something else, but there'll only be four.
Yeah.
And we can always change that at a later date.
Market change over time.
So, so basically what we're essentially doing is allowing the continued use, but they're scaling it back the number from ten to, or nine out of four essentially is what we're basically doing.
I think currently we're scaling it down to zero and I'm hoping to four.
Oh, no, as I'm saying, yeah, you know, I'm saying you're, you're.
That's my amendment that we keep the carve out of four.
Yeah, because it is zero. So we'll have to write some kind of an exception that, that identifies a cap for office use at four in, you know, in the Riviera Village overlay on Catalina with the C two.
Yeah, if we can get the motion passed.
Right, okay. So.
Can, Chair, when?
But you had a question first.
I do, to make, is it called a superseding motion?
It'd be a.
A friendly amendment.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to change that number to six.
So from four to six. How do you feel about that?
Your friendly amendment, yes.
I actually like that better too because it reflects what it's at there now.
I, I would want to, and just as the practitioner, as the implementer, I'm thinking, okay, so somebody comes in and I'm reading this ordinance and then I'm going to the exception and they're coming into a new storefront, not one of, you know, not, not one of the existing office frontages. And they say, I want to come in on the ground floor. And I would say, well, we have a cap at six, there's two, I'm just thinking it through right now.
Sure.
There's a cap at six. We already have.
Nine.
Nine.
So you think, so no. So no.
Right. But if we get a look at the three or four and they want to open one, we can't say yes.
Correct. What I was thinking when I started that conversation was, I wasn't going to be able to say no because we don't have any that are there legally yet.
No, we're in excess of the cap.
But I guess they are, they're legal nonconforming. So.
Yes.
Okay, so yes, that's how we would practically apply it if somebody came in. We'd say no until those legal nonconforming locations went down below that cap number.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, that's okay.
I think if they'll move out, that could take decades.
It took, yeah.
Yeah.
So it really doesn't change anything.
Yeah.
I mean, in a way.
Not advance the goal at all.
Presented.
Well, we don't know what these guys leases are, probably five year leases and we don't know where they are.
They could reach, should they renew their lease?
They can, or maybe they won't.
And they renew their lease?
That's price, that price point will determine.
And if they wanted to do some alterations, additions, et cetera, they'd have to come here for that, with a planning commission.
But if they just want to renew their lease, they can stay forever.
Want to try that?
That's, and that's typically what happens there. So this does not advance the goal.
Yeah, so in this, we're doing similar to what we do with the smoke or smoke shop ordinance, which was, we put a cap and then essentially they will drop off. We, we put a set amount on it. So we have a motion, you have a question first or?
So now it stands at six.
Six. So we have a friendly amendment to six. So we would be doing two things now.
Accept the amendment.
Do you expect, he accepted the, the friendly amendment?
Should we vote on the friendly amendment or should we proceed with the motion?
I think we need to do the.
Go friendly amendment first, right?
Okay, so can we get a roll call vote on the friendly amendments first?
Commissioner Light?
Aye.
Commissioner Boswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conroy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hazelton?
No.
Chairperson Craig?
Yes. So the friendly amendment continues.
So let's vote on the motion now.
So we, we vote on the motion. A roll call vote on that?
Read the motion. Let's read the motion as it now stands.
Right.
So we know what we're voting on.
Yeah.
This time.
The addition.
Read the whole thing.
Director Scully, do you want to read it as you understand the motion?
Yeah, I understand. So the, we, the, if you want to pull up the recommendation. I'm going for it. Or the proposed, yeah, the recommendation. Would you prefer the spreadsheet? Yeah, maybe, no, the proposed ordinance. So. The ordinance itself. So the recommendation is the adoption of the proposed ordinance with an exception clause or some sub clause that allows for the long-term retention of up to six, a limit of six office spaces on the ground floor.
Professional services.
Well, okay, we don't have a definition. Professional services, that's the problem. So do you want professional offices?
Can you clip that up again?
It didn't include medical.
Yeah, go back to the definition.
Didn't say B and C.
It was B and C, I think. So B and C.
B and C.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I can vote on that.
Okay, so we have the motion and we have it clarified. So we'll call vote then, so.
Commissioner Light?
Aye.
Commissioner Boswell?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Gaddis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazelton?
No.
Chairperson Craig?
Aye. So that item has been passed. Thank you, thank you, Sean.
My pleasure. Are changes needed to the resolution?
What's that?
Are changes needed to the resolution at this moment?
Um, yes, but we're not going to do it right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll carry that to the city council. It'll be, you know, a, a clear recital that says the planning commission's recommendation was, you know, and we'll spell it out with some language that puts a cap on the retention of six ground floor office locations.
Correct. Very good.
Okay.
Okay.
J two would be just as fun.
Exactly. It might be more fun. Okay, now, now we're at J two, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter two zoning and land use of the Rhode Island Municipal Code pertaining to parking regulations for non-residential uses located on properties within the Artesia and Aviation Corridor Area Plan. So do we have a presentation on that, Mr. Scully?
A motion to open the public hearing.
Just got a little musical chairs real quick. Uh, technically we did, yeah, so you're right. Give me a second to pull this out.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We did it officially now.
Okay, good.
Very good.
Okay, a motion to open the public hearing.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll begin. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Scully frantically gets his presentation.
All right, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission, Sean Scully, planning manager. So we're moving on to J two. And this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter two of the zoning land use regulations concerning parking regulations within the Artesia and Aviation Corridor Area Plan for commercial properties. So we can't really talk about this without talking about what, where this is all coming from. It's rooted in the Artesia and Aviation Corridor Area Plan. We have at least one member of our planning commission that worked diligently on this plan over a number of years. It was finally adopted, it was finally adopted December eighth, twenty twenty. It's a, it's a blueprint for, that contains all types of strategies to revitalize the Artesia and Aviation corridors. It recommends increases in the F A R from point five to point six. That's already been done. And then it has a number of strategies to, you know, to, to vital, revitalize the corridor, specifically targeting parking and trying to figure out what, how, how do we deal with parking? It's been determined to be somewhat of an impediment for new businesses to come in. So that's just a little bit on the, kind of the birth of it. Whoop. There you go. Okay. And then one of the things that went into the development of ACAP that is really root, you know, that's giving staff and, and the council some comfort that the ordinance recommendation tonight can be accommodated is the fact that there was a very detailed parking study done as part of the ACAP for the whole corridor. They surveyed, it was a utilization survey for every single parking lot, private as well as public, parking in the street. And the occupancy rate, and this was done before COVID in December of twenty eighteen. And it was a, you know, kind of a high season, if you will, if there is such a thing in the ACAP. And, you know, we had pretty low utilization rates of parking, sixty eight percent occupancy on the street spaces and fifty percent occupancy in the parking lot. So optimum parking utilization rates are about eighty five percent. So there's, there's ample parking within the corridor. And this is just one of the exhibits up in the upper right that, that identify, there's only a couple of blocks where you have those red and black, those are like ninety percent utilization. So there, there, there are a couple of blocks that do get close to optimization, but there's a number, the majority of the, the blocks and the private parking lots are significantly underparked. So to date, what have we done to implement ACAP? We took a first stab at trying to relax parking. Again, this is all trying to revitalize the corridor. And so in twenty twenty three, the planning commission and the city council worked to relax the parking standards for the preferred uses along the corridor. Those are offices, interestingly enough, and restaurants. And, and they, we've lowered those parking generation rates from, for restaurants, they were extremely high, like one per, let's say, seventy five square feet down to one per three hundred square feet. And then there was number of really flexible parking options that were also adopted in twenty twenty three. You could do tandem parking, valet, parking lifts, off-site agreements. So, you know, they, we've already looked, we've already taken one step and what we're bringing tonight is, is the next step. So skip ahead, we went to the council in August this year. And that Mark took the item and the, it was to, you know, kind of, you know, get going again on the land use element update that we still have to complete. But the, the real focus of the meeting was the ACAP revitalization. So at, at that meeting, the council was talking about all the different tools in the ACAP to try to revitalize the ACAP and increase in F A R, going well beyond the point six up to the one point five. They talked about elimination of open space requirements, rooftop dining and signage, maximum build out caps, you know, allowing for mixed use, property maintenance ordinance. So all these different subjects they got into. In addition to reducing parking requirements. And I've got a couple more slides that really get into that component. So they, they didn't make any decisions on the other items. The only one they made the decision on was the parking. And they directed staff, that last bullet, to prepare an ordinance that would, and their position was they wanted to eliminate parking requirements going forward in the ACAP. So, and what kind of got us there was, and there's these next handful of slides, these are the exact slides we showed to the council. We did a, a massing and parking study. And we, we looked at all the, you know, there's basically three types of lots there. The standard fifty by one thirty, a hundred by one thirty, and then one fifty by one thirty. And we, these next slides are, the predominant lot size is the fifty by one thirty. And if you were to apply even the one per three hundred parking ratio, which was a relaxation, and you did a standard surface parking lot, the largest building you could get on one of those standard lots is a twenty five hundred square foot building with an F A R of less than four, less than point four. Two stories, it would require eight parking spaces. So that's just, that's not going to incentivize revitalization. And then here's the next example. So if we start. So if we start applying those creative techniques, you could, you can start getting the building, you can start getting a greater FAR. If you do tandem with valet, but that's another expense for the business to run the valet, you can do two stories, forty-two hundred square feet and a point six four FAR. So you're starting to get, you know, you're starting to get a little bit more, more opportunity for development, which would incentivize that revitalization. Then you go to the final one and you throw parking lifts on there, which can be problematic in and of themselves, right up against residential, three stories high or three lifts high. And then you can get up to a point eight FAR approximately. So what, what, what it was telling us is with our parking standards, we're not going to get revitalization, to try to meet our parking standards, even our flexible ones, we're just not going to get redevelopment that's enough to start turning over these properties. So, and, and then we, I wanted to throw this one up here. Here's a corner lot. So if you're going to meet our current parking standards and you're gonna, this is, you know, a large, three, three smaller lots combined, which is kind of a common occurrence on the corridor, on the corner, you're gonna, you're gonna need to provide nearly a hundred or approximately a hundred parking spaces to get the one point five and the only, and, keep the building to three stories, you'd have to go three levels of subterranean parking. And, you know, that, you know, you're, that's a multimillion dollar proposition just to do the parking, and that's probably not going to happen. So our parking, our massing and parking study really told us we've got to do something a little bit more extreme, little, as the council discussed it, a little bolder. And so we, staff then presented just a week ago Tuesday, a draft ordinance that, per council's direction, eliminates parking requirements within the ACAP for non-residential uses. So that's a new provision. Excluded the parking not required provision for restaurants, for fast food restaurants, and restaurants with drive-throughs. So it would also apply to those. We used to kind of carve them out because they're more of a commuter oriented, you know, in our prior discussions about it. So we didn't want to give them, we didn't want to incentivize that use as much. But now, you know, we, we, you know, the council's direction is let's, let's apply it to all non-commercial uses, no matter what they are. And then it requires design review for overlap parking. These are some of the existing legacy conditions or regulations in the, in the ordinance now. Requires design review for valet and tandem. All those extra, you know, flexible standards, they'll still be in place, and they just require administrative review. And then, you know, knowing how the market works, we're anticipating development community is still going to want to provide parking. So if parking is provided, it requires that the parking lots and garages comply with all our parking regulations. So that's what we presented on the ninth, and then the council had a lot of deliberations about it, and then they gave these next couple of slides as the direction from council as a result of what that draft we presented. So remove the existing language prohibiting restaurant and fast food drive-throughs. There was actually language in our parking regulations that prohibited, which is internally inconsistent with other sections of our ordinance, I'm, I can't remember even how that got there, but it prohibited fast food and drive-through restaurants in the ACAP.
Didn't they just put in one?
Uh, before any, before any of the, these, before we did the twenty twenty-three amendments that, that called out a prohibition on the fast food and drive-through, but that's being removed as part of this ordinance. And then revise the draft ordinance to apply to non, all non-residential uses, including fast food and restaurants, fast food restaurants and drive-throughs. So, so that, that's kind of redundant from the first bullet. And then incorporate language requiring, we had originally proposed that it was preferred to have the parking lots, if they provide it, in the back, behind the buildings, but council wanted to strengthen that and say, let's, let's require that. And then if it's, if, if parking is provided, and then with that, they said, you know, hey, let's make sure we're addressing any incompatible issues with parking in the rear, you know, concerns with parking areas adjacent to residential. So we, there's language in that, in the ordinance about that. And then if they do want to put the parking in front, we would require an AUP or a CUP for the parking areas that are proposed to be located in front of the buildings. And then incorporate future and regular, you know, this is a, a concern, I'm sure the commission will have, you know, unintended consequences, you know. We don't want parking in the adjacent residential neighborhoods, spillover parking, we don't want to impact adjacent private commercial lots. So there's a future and regular progress reports on, we're going to start measuring the redevelopment metrics, you know, like are we getting, are we getting more building permits for new projects? Are, you know, we're, we're, we're going to figure out what, how, what can we measure to give us an idea if this, if this strategy is working? And then also monitoring on a regular basis the potential impacts of overflow parking on the residential neighborhoods. So, and then finally, their direction was bring this to you guys and get your recommendation. And that's what we're here to do tonight. And then just real quick, a couple of slides on, it's, it's essentially the draft ordinance tonight. It's, it's built off of the existing section ten dash two point seventeen oh seven, and there's minor cleanup in the purpose, you know, there's a little bit of cleanup there. And then eliminates parking requirements for all permitted non-residential uses within the ACAP, including restaurant, fast food, and restaurants with drive-throughs. It also removes any parking requirements for new outdoor dining. And then, and then just what I discussed before, if parking is required, it's required to be behind proposed new buildings and structures. It's going to maintain, you know, all those flexible options are still going to be in play. And then it does incorporate exceptions if they want to put the parking between aviation or Artesia and the building. So if they want to put it in front of, adjacent to the, the boulevards, they need an AUP or a CUP. And that's what's before the body tonight. Oh, and this is just redundant again, there's, the cities now, in, in the city's specific, excuse me, strategic plan, there's going to be a regular checkup on what's, what's happening. Are we seeing revitalization on ACAP? Are we seeing unintended consequences on rolling back the parking to not require it? And then with that, you know, staff is recommending opening the public hearing, which you've done, take testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution by title only. We further reading, recommending that city council adopt the secret exemption declaration and make the amendment. And that concludes staff presentation, and we, I've got a word version of the, the latest ordinance, and we're available to, I'm available to discuss any.
Very good, Mr. Scully. Now, Mr. Gaddis motion first, I'll let you go. Do you have a question?
Yeah, it talks about parking in front of places, not allowed, only behind places. Didn't we just approve a, a project that had the parking under?
We, we did.
Okay. And if it says only behind, then underneath is not behind, right?
Correct, and we would, we would require an accessory, I mean, excuse me, an administrative use permit and, and process that. Because if we, you know, the, the, the requirement or that regulation, you know, we want them in the back because we'd rather see storefronts, right, along the boulevard. And if we don't get that, then we have to look at it more rigorously through administrative use and, and, or conditional use permit. So if somebody comes in and they're like, they just want the standard parking lot up front, and that's all they want to do, we're going to bring it here, and we're going to work with them in front of the planning commission to get some buffers of that parking lot to get, you know, maybe, maybe we can get them to redesign it and put some of the packing, the parking in the rear, so.
Yeah, I think the, the real rear parking, maybe I'm alone in this concern, is that if people don't see parking out in front of a place, they sort of have to make some assumptions about, first of all, which side of the building they have to drive down to get to the parking in the rear, and also you can't tell before driving down there if there's even an open space once you get there. And then you've got the issue of either backing out onto Artesia or finding some way of turning around in that rear parking lot, which may or may not be possible because it's very restricted back there, right? So I mean, I, I don't have an answer to that, just a concern that, that, you know, there, there is the potential that we're going to end up with, yeah, spillover into the neighborhoods and such, because simply people aren't, you know, going down, down beside the.
Little sign that says how many, how many.
And the, the council.
A single one of those are in Artesia now?
Well, no one's had to do that.
Oh, okay.
You see it in almost any parking structure where they tell you there's no spots available.
Is there a single one in Redondo Beach?
They're in, they're in Santa Monica all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
Places that have the kind of traffic we're about to have.
I'm all about parking structures.
Yeah, I like parking.
I like the Beverly Hills, like, two hours free thing is really great, and yeah, I'm all about that, but we, that's not being offered up here.
Yeah.
Another problem with the rear parking is you have wasted space because you need driveways to get access, access to the back of the property.
They need that anyway, right? Is it for loading stuff in and, I mean, I suppose.
Probably.
I mean, they can't really fill up the lot anyway, right? Given the floor area ratios, right? There's going to be a behind the, the business space, right?
Well, we don't have alleyway, we don't have alleyway access in the back because it, it goes right up to residential in most cases.
Right.
We're also going to have cars coming and going right next to people's bedroom windows potentially, but I mean, it is what it is.
Anyway.
Anyway, Mr. Gaddis, please.
Can we, what I'd like for everybody to remember is that we're trying to make this a walking area, okay? Aviation and Artesia both, we, we want that area to have their Riviera, okay? Riviera Village, or Montana in Santa Monica, or you name it. We all have those streets, all the cities have those streets. So I would like to see that parking actually made stronger, Sean. So for example, instead of saying they need to come for a conditional use permit or a administration review, that we just say, no, the parking has to go behind and behind the building, right? Or under, it doesn't matter. I mean, if they want to foot the bill to put parking under a building, that's fine, but we have to have the storefront, okay? Because remember, we're trying to give that area Montana, or you pick it, you pick your street. And parking in front will not allow that, okay? Another thing that isn't going to allow, and I'm really, you know, is the idea that we're going to have somebody walking along and then all of a sudden they have to stop because they got to drive into one of these fast food restaurants, and then they got to wait for the car, and then it goes around, and then they, they have to wait for the car to leave that parking lot. I feel very strongly that the fast food restaurant, the, the, the drive-through is really not pedestrian friendly at all. It makes absolutely no sense why that was put back in there again, because remember, we still have to envision what is it that we want? We don't want cars moving in and out like that. And the other thing is that there is surplus parking. That means that people can go there today and they can park on Artesia or Aviation, you know? We want them to do that because we want to slow traffic down, we want people to get out of their car, they drive their, their park, they walk all over, they go shopping, they do all the things that they do in these other streets. So, you know, we're really, we're really trying to change the look of those two streets, and I think the whole drive-through, fast food, that's not pedestrian friendly, keep the, all the parking lots off the street without a conditional use permit because it's not what that whole area is intended to be when they came in front of us.
Well, I think that, that our goal for Artesia especially, but the whole ACAP, is, is incompatible with fast food restaurants altogether, and the fact that there's some already there is, is disturbing. It's, it's a blight on the neighborhood. Especially some of the kinds of fast food that we have, and that, that, that should be addressed in some way, that those restaurants, those fast food restaurants will be the last ones on those lots to be ever approved, and when they are gone, those are now parking lots or parks or something like that. They don't have to be more restaurants.
I think there's definitely.
They certainly don't need to be fast food.
A conflict for our main street vision, okay? This whole idea, this area deserves this, you guys. We need to do, we need to bend over backwards to figure out how to get that there, okay? Aviation, Artesia. We've got the traffic issue of driving in, driving out, the idling vehicles there, we've got trash being collected, you know, when we've got people dropping their cups as they walk out or whatever. It just undermines the walkability, the small business mix, quality of life. I mean, I, I, I'm not sure why that got taken out of there, and I, I know, Sean, you mentioned that there was some conflict. Well, let's fix the conflict that, that caused it to need to be put back in there instead of, it doesn't work, it's not in our vision. Okay, so tonight, if we can just keep our vision in, then we won't go off topic. If everybody agrees that AIPAC was, was meant to be a walkable Riviera Village, we, we want those areas to be like that.
Supposed to be a, a main street for Redondo.
Yeah.
Commissioner Light, you had your hand.
Yeah. We're not the first place to do this, so let's take the lessons of other places that have done this.
Right.
Even our own city, because think about Riviera, Riviera Village, it actually has a triangular parking lot, which we just saw earlier. That's the, really the only place you can park there any Friday night, Saturday. You can't find street parking. So if we're successful with this, you will not find street parking on Aviation and Artesia at some point. So I think part of this planning and going back to the council with this should be, plan eventually, you're going to have to build a parking structure with the lighted, how many spots are in there? Because you're never going to get a lighted spot that will say, there's six parks out there against three open. That's prohibitively expensive, but that does make sense for a large parking structure, which should be in the middle conveniently located, hopefully eventually two of them in these, this, this area.
In ten years.
Power line corridor, there you go.
They already added a lot, they could, there's a lot of rooms.
A lot of room there, underground parking and above ground.
I don't know about that, but there's plenty of flat surface space.
You, you had a question next time, please?
Yeah, so, so one of the issues that, and we talked about this in the GPAC, with Artesia is, that's, that makes it different than Riviera Village, is especially now, is the fact that the sidewalks are so narrow, and they have trees and fire hydrants, garbage cans and stuff like that, you can't really realistically, with the age of the buildings and the narrow nature of the sidewalk, have the kind of outdoor dining kind of thing that you have all over Riviera Village, and that's one of its attractions, is they could basically have a drink outside or have dinner and drinks outside at one, at one of these restaurants outdoors. So, I mean, one of the things Riviera Village did, of course, during COVID, was to expand out, basically take away parking spaces in the street to, to accommodate outdoor dining. You know, it, it, obviously. You know, it, it, obviously it's way too late to do that. And Artesia is a major thoroughfare as well, as well. So that's part of the challenge. It is, it is, uh, you know, transit zone from Pacific Coast Highway to the 405 freeway. Uh, so that, you know, that is a constraint. So that, that's part of the issue here. I think it's a solvable problem, but it's not going to be an easily solvable problem. And, and your idea about, um, about it, you know, places like Rodeo Drive have the same problem, right? And what they did was they, anytime new building went in, they said, you gotta put in like six stories of underground parking. It's going to be run by the city for the benefit of the city. And, you know, they have a whole infrastructure to accommodate, uh, getting cars in parked, two hours of free parking, get them out. And that's been, that's been just golden for them. How that can be done here, possibly the, the right away, they already uh, put uh, a parking lot uh, no, on the north side of that, uh, and there's a lot of room to put more parking lot in there. And I'm sure they've had, there've been discussions with uh, AES to, to put more, uh, more in there. Uh, not AES, so Southern California, Edison.
Right.
Um, but, but these are kind of part of the constraints. And I would almost kind of lean toward floating the idea that any new construction there is set back further on the sidewalk to create space. I think wider sidewalks lead to more walkability, you know, kind of intuitive, I guess, maybe not correct, but intuitive. Uh, but, so, you know, if we're playing with the character of this and we want to make it more walkable and outdoor dining friendly and, you know, uh, convenient for people to spend time there, going from store to store, bar to restaurant, things like that, these are some things we should be thinking about.
Yeah, um, I think what we need to keep in mind is that all of this takes time and can be revisited. So, I mean, if everything went great and it turned it around, so we completely take away the parking requirement and people come in there, it becomes very revitalized and everybody's happy. They're really counting on neighbors walking, Artesia and Aviation. You know, I spoke with one uh, resident that says that right now she lives in right off Aviation and they walk down to Pier Avenue, the, the top part of Pier Avenue for dinner and things like that. But if available, she would easily go to Aviation. And, you know, just by changing, you know, that whole stretch, um, you, you're able to kind of extend Pier Avenue up into that Aviation all the way up and actually have that vibe, have that same vibe there. And so, um, you know, we're thinking Artesia, we're thinking Aviation, they kind of have different feels. You can also take, the, one, one of the women that had a long conversation with me is actually a planner in another city. And she's, you know, she was recommending actually, you know, you, we all know this, when you narrow the streets, you slow traffic down. You encourage people to stop and look and walk, right? So the idea is to get them out of the car and to shop and to eat. So, um, I think that tonight we don't have to solve the problem of what the parking situation could be in eight years. And at that point, maybe there is some kind of a triangle like Riviera where we, we're able to add or that city council and those people are able to add parking. So I think tonight we just want to say, yeah, we want to revitalize it however we can. And it's going to take enough time that we don't have to worry about where the parking is going to go tonight. Except for that it's not going to be on the street because that just takes away from the walking thing. And Riviera doesn't have parking, let's say that you're gonna go to, to Gobby's, that restaurant there.
Gobby Jeans.
Yeah, I don't sit there and go, okay, gosh, Gobby's doesn't have any parking. I can't go there. No, you just either walk, bike or park someplace and walk, you know? So, so I think we have to like think that way. We don't, if they decide to put parking, it has to be in the back. And I really honestly don't think it should come in front of the planning commission or the administrative because we know, we've had some really strong planning commissions and we've had some really weak planning commissions, right? So we could have a planning commission in five years that says, yeah, let's go ahead, let's put the parking up front and put the building in the back. Well, we've just messed up with the whole walking vision when you put the parking lot up front like that, you know?
Right. Mr. Buck, Commissioner Boswell.
Yeah, I, I would not like to be a person driving down Artesia looking for a restaurant and see nothing but a sea of cars between me and the building. So I, I certainly agree with that. And, and because of the huge surplus that we have now, yeah, you're right. This isn't something we need to solve now because we, we don't really know what the problem is until it starts to occur.
Yeah.
But I think what, what would be prudent is that at this time, we identify places on Artesia and, and hopefully on uh, uh, Aviation as well, where a parking structure could be built in the future. For example, that large lot behind the post office and, and the, and the stores just east of it. There's a very large space there that could easily made into, it's not going to be like the one that Hermosa Beach put on their Pier Avenue or their Pier Plaza. But it would, could easily be three, four, five stories. And who knows what you could do with the top floor of that? Could be a park, could be a swimming pool.
Dog park.
Dog park.
Not a dog, not a dog park.
Mr. Gallow.
But it could be some, but just to quickly wrap up, uh, I, I think that to, to say there's no parking requirement now is fine, as long as everybody understands it. At some point, there is going to be one. But in the meantime, we identify certain parts where a parking structure or a large amount of parking could be, could be built. We should, we should have contingencies in place because if I'm gonna come in and put my big giant restaurant on Artesia, I want to know that I can stay there for 50 years and not say, you know, 20 years down the road, nobody comes here because there's nowhere to park. So we need to plan contingencies, even though they may never be used. Hopefully they will be.
All right, um, so I, going through the Fair and Peers uh, study that came up with this, you know, uh, ideally you have 85% utilization of parking, but here it's only 50%. I wasn't clear what parking spaces they were counting. I know they counted the street parking.
Right.
And, um, but the rest of it is private parking, right? So we're talking about parking in front of a strip mall that usually has a sign that says, you know, part, this is parking for this mall, right? And we have parking, they were all, if they counted that, then they also counted all the spaces behind buildings, right? That a lot of those, until I started looking at the maps in the study, I was unaware that those, those parking spots were even there. And so the va, I, I think the majority of the parking they're talking about that's available is not like public parking. It's open spaces, but they're basically private spaces. And they're not, you know, if I'm, if I'm going, you know, if, if, if we're going to a place for dinner uh, in, on Artesia Boulevard, we don't necessarily start checking parking lots behind private businesses and private buildings to find a place to park. So, so are those spaces truly available? Or are they just empty spaces that are being counted for this study that aren't really an option for so many?
In some cases, they could be an option. Um, it, it really though, it tells us that the mix of uses, that the uses that we have on the, on the corridor aren't attracting, um, you know, they're, they're not, they're not creating the, the energy, the, you know, the, the utilization of those spaces, right? They're not, they're, you know, they're, they're just, it, it's telling us all the, a lot of the areas along the corridor are, are underutilized. You're right that they're not, you know, the park, the parking is just on private property. It's just kind of a, it tells us these businesses are not really bringing in a lot of, a lot of customers, a lot of clients because they're just, they're, you know, they're, the uses are, they're very old structures. Um, we, we just don't have a lot of the types of uses that are going to fill their parking lot. And so that's really, on the private parking lot, it's really telling us there's, there's problems with most of the uses along there in terms of how much they're being frequented and how much they're being utilized. So it's, you know, it's, it, the street parking is public. And that's, you know, we, we know we've got additional spaces there. And the private parking is kind of telling us two things. There is, there, you know, there is available parking at almost any place you go. Um, and there is an under, underdeveloped situation, you know? That's, that's really what it's telling us on the private property. It's not really a, a straight line equation to usable parking for everybody like the street parking is. It tells us kind of a couple of things.
So the development has to actually hugely change before we have a parking problem is what we're seeing.
Yes, and that's, yeah, you know, and that's what this is about. This is about just completely taking parking off the table as an impediment to future development. And even, and that's why they came off the fast food too. We, it's like, we want to make stuff happen. And so we're gonna, we're just gonna take parking off the table and, and, and try to get some properties to start turning over.
Right.
Right, well, and I to, I totally get the, the objective. I, I guess what I'm saying is that the statistics from that Fair and Peer Study makes assumptions about availability of parking. It says, well, half the spaces are empty, but they're not because they're on private property. And, you know, Redwood Animal Hospital has, I think, you know, something like 16 spaces. But you're not supposed to park there at night. It's a private business, that's private property. It's not available to you to park there and then go across the street to the Thirsty Club.
You're going to the pet clinic.
Well, but it's not open at night. So it's, you know what I mean? So those spaces are there, they're empty, but they're not available to you uh, in, at night.
Yeah.
Because it's closed, you know?
Even if you go to the pet clinic during the day, they expect when you're done with your business there that you get in your car and leave. You can't just walk down the street and eat at a restaurant down.
True, yeah.
Well, and some of these restaurants too, like you said, if they have a lot there, they'll put a chain across to prevent people from parking in there so they don't leave their cars and take away from their, their ability to use the lot in the morning.
Right, so those are empty spaces, but they're not really surplus, you know, wasted. I mean, the, the, I, I guess the study is misleading and I'm not saying that there isn't a solution. It's just not a useful tool for, for this type of decision-making. Um, I think the phenomena of there being a lot of, you know, and this goes to the point of if you require parking, you're in, you're gonna end up with a lot of empty spaces, basically. Uh, spaces that are basically, there's space on there that's being wasted. And the idea is, how, how do you solve that?
Yeah, yeah.
And it might be by taking away the parking requirements, you know? Then you've got businesses rather than empty parking spaces.
Yeah, I, I, to your point, I think the, the 50% of the private parking space is being utilized is more of a statement about the, the health of your commercial district.
Right, because they're not packing them with Redwood clients, yeah.
It's, there's, it's telling us we don't have a highly functional commercial district that we'd like to have.
Yeah, I, I have never had a problem finding parking really close to where I'm going on Artesia.
Yeah.
Never, never once.
Yeah, I, I think the only spot that I, I identified at the council meeting was between uh, Ruxton and, and Phelan, I think. And there's one that, where the uh, Borgino's restaurant is right around the corner. I know that next block over in Matthews, they do have a, the residents can't park in their houses because people park at the restaurant and they, they, they park in their neighborhood and have to walk over to the restaurant. So they can't park in front of their homes. But that's like, that's one unique small area, the whole section there, but.
Yeah, I.
Wherever else, like I think Commissioner Boswell is the same thing. I've never had a problem parking there.
I wish I had. It's not here. This is the public street one.
It's a dim street.
Yeah. But if, the, um, the one on the private property, there's one, I think there's like one or two little private property areas that are utilized like 90%. And it's the one, um, I think it's uh, Phelan, maybe? No, let's see. Might be, might be that shopping center. It's the one with the chicken mason and there's a couple of other restaurants. And it's a strip center, but it's, it's got, you know, it's got like three or four good restaurants. And that one, that one, when you look at the private parking study, um, for that, it's, it's like 90% or so. It's, you know, it, that's packed. So, you know, it's again, it kind of comes to our preferred uses, you know, uh, that, that are getting the attention and, um, that's.
Rob, is that something you feel like that has to be solved tonight? Or we just go with the idea that we just take parking away? It gets busy enough and in eight years, the city council is, they're, they're gonna be forced maybe to deal with it. Hopefully they're gonna actually have that problem. But right now, we're trying really to get that place revitalized.
Yeah, I, I guess that's part of, um, yeah, I, I think it's just, it is, is a part of the solution.
Oh, totally.
And it, there's so many other things too to deal with it. I'm not against it at all. Um, uh, I, but, um, you know, we did go through this whole thing, um, in, in, at the, at the G pack. And I mean, we were thinking about all the things about creating bike lanes, you know, closing, you know, how do you do that without constricting Artesia Boulevard? There were a lot of issues to it. Um, and, and we did change the FAR.
Yeah, but we spent so much time already as a body on A cap.
Yeah.
Already done all that. We've done the pipe, the bikes, the racks, the, okay, so now they're saying it's still not going crazy there, guys. Let's just do away with the parking. And I actually think it's a great idea. Right now, requirement, just right now, let it get busy, let it get to a point where the council actually has to deal with the problem.
Right, let's let some create a problem, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, we don't even know what's gonna happen, but we really want to encourage, uh.
We, we know what we're gonna make happen. It, we just don't know how fast it's gonna happen.
Yeah, we don't.
But we need a contingency for down the road so that we don't develop ourselves out of the opportunity to create appropriate parking opportunities.
Why do we need the contingency tonight?
So that somebody doesn't build condos on a parking lot that we need someday.
Oh, no, it's commercial.
Yeah, residential and mixed use or a different issue.
So you think something that's owned commercial now means that the state of California isn't going to force us to build 350 condos there someday?
Sort of a different issue that is also talked about in the package.
It's easy to do, it's flexible, and it's good planning. I don't think just making it the Wild West is the appropriate thing to do. I'm all for doing away with a, a business coming in and not having a parking requirement. I think the city needs to plan for the day when that area, the, the economic impact of that area is negative because people don't go there because they don't like circling the block for 20 minutes waiting for somebody to pull out so they can park. We need a contingency.
Pretty far out though in terms of timeline, isn't it?
Doesn't matter. It's an eventuality.
But how would we?
Or, Artesia doesn't get developed and then you don't do anything with it anyway.
You can have two thoughts at the same, in your brain at the same time. I, I don't disagree with Commissioner Boswell on that one. I think it's, it's not a terrible thing for this body to say that to the, the city council that, yeah. If you're successful, you better have a plan.
So, 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 so to articulate that, so we're, we, it sounds like we're in agreement with the, taking away the parking requirement, right? So what do we, how do we want to then, okay, we, we would kind of agreed on that. So how do we articulate that other spot?
Resolution.
Which is in the resolution.
And then, so that's taken care of. And then what we would do is, um, Sean, we would make sure that the city, in, in here, we would say that the city council should
Yeah.
have an idea of where they're gonna put parking, when it becomes a problem.
To contemplate that at some, yeah.
Uh, and also can, I would say also consider, um, since we really can't shrink, uh, you know, take away, do it, do a, what a traffic, uh.
Diet?
Yeah, traffic diet on Artesia Boulevard. So we can't make Artesia Boulevard narrower, really. Uh, it's not really practical, that we should start thinking about, uh, that maybe, uh, we can eliminate parking requirements, but maybe, and, but there's still room on the property, given the FAR, for us to have a little, little more setback so that we can start heading the direction of having more spacious sidewalks on, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
On Artesia Boulevard.
The idea there that that's what we want them to do in your business.
That, that they start considering that. And there's all sorts of studies that would need to occur, blah, blah, blah.
To make that happen.
Yeah, and so they would direct staff, okay, can you come back with some ideas on? And in fact, as part of the G pack documents that are even in this package, you can see some ideas being. some ideas being considered in terms of, uh, bike lanes and wider sidewalks and such, but.
Okay.
Okay.
I think if we look at the resolution on page five, does everybody, how do you guys feel about the, the not allowing the parking lot in the front on the sidewalk? Instead of having it be a conditional use per, permit or an administration permit, you know, review, just, um, and this wasn't just my idea, it was, it was a couple of people talking to me about it, that it just has to say no. Cause we, you know, in Riviera, you're not gonna have a parking lot in Catalina that you walk past. It just doesn't go with the whole concept.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Is that, that's a possibility. You keep that requirement out, right?
What the council was looking for though was, you know, they, they agree. They want it, they much prefer it and want it required in the back, but there's kind of a, there's market forces at play and we don't want to, you know, some, there's circumstances that could come into play where we are not able to accommodate a good business development project because there's, there's no way they can do their parking in the back. We don't know what those are, we won't, what those conditions may be, but we want to give the, the market the flexibility. And if it's, and if it's just, hey, we just want our parking in front and we, you know, the planning commission can deny, deny the project if they don't have, you know, a sound reason for it.
Yeah, but, but when, okay, if, if a business went through the process of drawing plans and you guys have actually looked at them and the, and it's gotten to the point where you, they need to come in front of the planning commission, you know, we're not gonna say no because of the expense would be required. They've already done so much money in these plans. So in the end, we would say, we would say, oh, these poor people, yeah, you need your parking lot in the front, you know, because they've already gone to the expense of having these plans drawn.
Well, and, and then as part of that, okay, you need the parking lot in the front. Well, you've got to set that parking back. You need at least, you need one building up here. Let's get one, a satellite building in here or, or up front. Uh, there's all sorts of things that we can do that are not gonna really, they're not optimum, not the perfect way to get your pedestrian walkability feel, uh, your sense of place, but it's, it's, you know, can come pretty close. You could get little parkway strips for outdoor dining areas. Um, you know, there, there could be some, you know, real creative ways that we could achieve something similar to what we all would want, which would be the building up on the front. Um, but, but the business, you know, still, the business might not be able to, to live with that. And we want to, if we just say, it's gotta be in the back and there's no other option, we.
Well, or underneath.
What's that?
Or underneath.
Or underneath. You know, that's.
Expensive.
It, it's, yeah, so.
Parking in the front.
We definitely, it will be made clear to the development community, hey, you know, we, you, you go, we, we get you into building permit, plan check tomorrow, which is critical for the development community. If you put that parking in the back, that's a pretty big incentive. And if you don't, you know, you're looking at months and we're still gonna get you probably to put a building up front and some parking, you know, adjacent to the building. Um, you know, we might, you know, there, there's a lot of leverage with that.
I guess what makes me nervous, Sean, is that I know what this planning commission's gonna do, but I don't know what the planning commission in 10 years is gonna do. And they may just not think it's a big deal.
Yeah.
You know, and that makes me kind of nervous because again, you know, we want that area to have their Riviera. And so, um.
Yeah.
Okay, well, is there a way to, um, so you, I, I'd like to just take it out.
What's that?
I'd like to just take that flexibility out, but if you're.
I, I mean, you know, that could be, if there's consensus with the commission, you know, that's what, you know, that will be part of your recommendation.
How does everyone feel? No, or yes?
Commissioner Boswell.
So I'm having a hard time figuring out what kind of business would be so bent on having their parking in the front that they'd kill the deal.
No, I know, I know.
So we don't get a dry cleaner. We already have a dry cleaner on Artesia that overcharges.
Your sign.
So what kind of business is dying for a front parking lot?
You know, I haven't had enough time to think about it.
It's an issue, really.
We, it.
Not allowing it, I don't think limits anything.
In the, in the resolution, you know, there could be.
And no drive-throughs either.
They might have a drop-off pickup situation.
It would be a, a K, like a drop, a liquor store or a K drop in Marketplace.
Or a smoke shop.
Yeah.
Or smoke.
We don't know. We don't know what the market's gonna come to us with.
No parking.
Well, since this is going back to the city council, we can always, uh, take it out. And then the council person that talked to me about it can fight for it on the floor.
You know, certainly, if, if that's a recommendation, you know, that we can bring that forward. Um, you know, I, I know that the intention is we're trying to incentivize, we're trying to, you know, good development, the way we want it site planned, but, but, you know, some development, which we're not getting now.
Right.
So we, we don't want to like, oh, no parking required. And it's like, well, we need a few spaces. Well, they, you know, then, then we hit them with another regulation that is gonna be, you know, maybe impede a future development that we want. That's, that's what we're trying to, and we're not saying they can't, you know, so, so we just want to then take it to the next step. And then, okay, well, if you've got good reasons for having it in front, let's hear them. And if they don't, you know, we can actually, we can condition that they do.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah.
Commissioner Conroy?
Yeah, Sean.
Uh, I'm in favor of removing the parking requirement, but eventually, and it might not be eight or 10 years out, we're, um, we're gonna have a parking problem. And so maybe, I wasn't on G-PAC, maybe this was already solved, but we need a public above-ground lot and asking, asking businesses, hey, if you want to, you know, we'll let you build here, but you got to build out a subterranean parking. That's prohibitively expensive and people don't like parking underground for safety reasons or whatever else. So I'm just, my question to you is, what is the long-term plan or idea for an eventual large parking structure or, or two along this corridor?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, that's a fair question and we hope we have that problem, that we need it. That's, that's really their, and, and, and they are planning, they know it's in the, in the tool chest. If they start seeing turnover, okay, we got to start, we got to, maybe it's a parking in Luffy. We can't just give away no parking. We say there's a requirement for parking and, but you don't have to provide it if you kick into this development fund. Um, there's all sorts of strategies then to start accumulating funds, you know, parking meters. Um, there's, you know, that's, and they're fully aware of that, the council is, it's within the ACAP. And, and I'm, what I'm hearing is that the planning commission is recommending that the city council plan for city parking lots now. And that's, you know, that's, and, and it, it's on the table, but they're, you know, they're really, they're saying that, yes, we will, but we, you know, we need a reason to do it. And we need to start getting.
You just gave the reason.
What's that?
If, 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 if you're gonna do this, you've got to do it thinking it's gonna work. Otherwise, don't bother. And if it works, you're gonna need more parking someday. Plan for where that's gonna be now. You made a great case for this. Why that can't all be part of this one, you know, resolution is beyond me.
Well, it can be, it can be.
No parking in the front and, and no fast food, no drive-throughs and contingency planning for park, for, for large-scale city-owned parking in the future, when, when demand requires it.
Commissioner Boswell, that goes in there.
Excuse me?
That goes in there.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you talking over me? Or am I talking over you?
She, she was.
Just take your turn.
Take it.
But wait till someone stops talking, then take your turn and let chairman call on you.
Mr. Boswell, please continue. Continue, finish your.
I, I think I've made my point.
Okay.
Both of them.
Okay, very good. So, uh, two things. One, I know, Mr. Commissioner, you had a point to make. Well, I, I was gonna say, they, uh, I mean, what you mentioned too about the planning for parking ahead is basically something I know it's already been entertaining in Riviera Village with the Triangle Parking Lot. That's one thing that the village has been looking to potentially pay for and actually solicited, uh, kind of bids at one point to figure out how much that would cost if they actually did do that at some point. So, uh, to your point, they're already thinking about it. Yeah, maybe, again, how we do that here, you know, I don't know.
We just make a, right, we just put it in there. We just add it to the resolution as we always.
Yeah.
Planning commission.
Very well. And Commissioner, you had a question.
Okay, so, uh, we talked about this a lot in the, and, uh, in the, uh, G-PAC, um, the points you were raising. Uh, first, I, you're, you're a bit focused, focused on underground parking. Uh, that was never really something on the table because the lots are too, too short and too narrow to turn cars around underground. And plus it's, it was some ungodly number, like a million dollars a space or something like this. It's like completely out of the question. So we're really talking about behind it, uh, in front of it, or, or the building, or, uh, or parking ramps. And we contemplated something like, uh, 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 ground level parking under the power lines. And in fact, they put in sort of like a starter lot, you know, which I don't know, it only has like a couple dozen spaces or something. But, uh, so that went in subsequently, but there's a lot more room. And also another spot that we, two spots that we identified, one was behind the post office. There's that lot there. And that's an old post office, blah, blah, blah. And also we contemplated where the current, uh, public library is there, uh, because that's a, that's a large lot and you can put a parking ramp in there with a library. Um, so that's actually an, an option that we considered. Here's another thing about the timing of all this and why, um, the constraints on parking, uh, are extremely likely not to be something that's gonna be a sudden issue of need. Uh, these properties, uh, one reason why they haven't been revitalized to date is that they're not owned by individuals for the most part. The vast majority of them were purchased 60 or 70 years ago by individuals and they're now owned by family trusts who have very little incentive to put money into the properties, first of all. And second of all, aren't very good at making decisions because there are, yeah, it's a trust and you have beneficiaries scattered around various generations, scattered around the world, collecting rents and, you know, not much into the thought of, hey, let's, you know, not take any income for a period of time and invest back in the property. That really isn't on the table. And it takes the full decision power of the beneficiaries of these trusts to actually vote to, to sell the property. And then they're, you know, that, that's a decision that is made not by one person, but by a slew of people, many of whom may not get along or are hard to get a hold of or, you know, the thing is, it's, it's not gonna happen quickly.
Right.
Um, and I think that's part of our issue for the most part on this, but anyway.
Is it gonna come from eminent domain?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
That, that's a complicated process.
Yeah, sure is. And where the post office is, I see the area you're referring to. Did, did, does the post office likely leases that space?
I don't know who owns that property.
It's, uh, mainly used by the condos on the street behind it.
Yeah.
And the restaurants that are just east of the post office.
So I'm just wondering.
I think they do lease that property though.
I, yeah, I don't know anything about who owns that.
Someone owns it and someday the city's gonna need to buy that.
Yeah, well, like, like as you said.
Cause there's no other, there's not another large piece of.
Well, there's that, that, um, uh, what is it? Um, that grocery store.
Grocery outlet.
Grocery outlet, right.
Yeah, yeah, grocery, grocery outhouse there. So they had that enormous lot and it was empty. The store was empty when, um.
Albertson's.
Albertson's closed there, right? For a long period of time, to the point where it was becoming, it was blighted, a blighted property really. And the city, I think, um, I think twisted some arms.
Yeah, well, like you said, the family that owned it.
Weed's grown in the parking lot.
Depreciated asset, they didn't really care.
Yeah.
Same issue, it's private property, so.
Yeah.
And so unless they could condemn it, they couldn't try to do, condemn the domain on it at some point.
Right.
Uh, you have a question, I believe.
So we have the contingency, uh, that the city council come up with some parking ideas that indicate where they have that. So we're gonna add that to the resolution. How do we feel about the striking? Do we want a administrative review or conditional use permit if they want to bring in the parking up front? Or we just want to say, no, you can't have the parking on the sidewalk?
Hmm, how do the rest of you feel about this?
I think it should be a no.
No? We have a stop, I think.
Prohibited?
Yes, how's that?
Prohibited in the front unless the lot's already, so you have, you, you don't want to wind up with Artesia eventually turning into a giant strip mall.
Oh, yeah, that we, we.
And that's, that's what front parking will create.
And we back where, uh, Commissioner Light.
Yeah, the, the one question I have about that, and I didn't get an answer on that, is, um, a food mart a preferred property or, um, business on that corridor? If so, I could see a, that, I've never seen one without parking in front.
True.
So that would be the only concern I have about in front parking. I can't think of any other business that I would.
We did approve that food, uh, what did you?
Yeah, the one at the gas station.
No.
No, there was the, the, it was like a restaurant and a grocery store.
Yeah, it's like a combination of a bunch of different types of restaurants, a few with the underground.
Oh, yeah, Grub House.
Grub House.
Underground, right.
Which is a combination of how many different restaurants?
I think up to 15 or so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and their lot is underground.
Their parking's underground.
It's a bigger, much.
Cause they need the space.
Yes.
Yeah.
So would that, would that food mart be able to park in the rear? Is there any reason that they couldn't?
Well, there is one now. Um, the street up from Borgino's has a, uh, 7-Eleven or something.
Oh, yeah.
And parking in rear would work?
It's always in front. It's in front like everything else. It's on a corner.
Does it have to be in front?
I, I don't think how you would ever have a food mart successful without parking in front. I, I, I've never seen one. I, I can't imagine.
Well, and actually today, if this resolution, they wouldn't have a requirement to put any parking.
Right.
So they would have their food mart and they would say, oh, wow, okay, we don't even have to put parking, so we're gonna make it an extra big food mart.
I've seen liquor stores like that, but they're.
Yeah.
No, it's true.
You say food mart, is that a grocery store or is that?
Uh, the, the, the combination, like a 7-Eleven.
Like convenience store?
Convenience.
Okay.
Our yellow liquor store that we okayed six months ago, they have the parking in the rear.
No, no, we didn't okay it though.
No, yeah.
The other one we did.
Oh, the other one.
PCH.
Okay, oh, okay.
That one we did.
Okay.
Okay, so how does everyone feel about?
So how does everyone feel about that suggestion? So we were talking about not having a.
Not having the conditional use permit or the administrative review. So it will, it will just say you have, you can't have a parking space in the, parking in front on the sidewalk. It has to be in the back or not at all, actually, is where we're at now. They don't have any requirement to put parking in.
And this is only for new construction?
Right.
Uh, everyone else grandfathered it. Yeah.
So we, the overall, we all feel that.
I could live with that.
I see a lot of nodding heads, so.
Anybody nod, I guess, and anybody doesn't like that idea. Okay, can we strike that then, Sean?
Yeah.
I mean, it's probably gonna get put back in, would be my guess.
Only, only parking.
But it was a council person that asked me to look at it.
Fair enough.
Okay, so can we, um, look at page five?
Councilman.
I think we strike those.
So which one, we're talking only?
Strike the, uh, B, which would say on page five, it would say exception, uh, administration use permit, administrative use permit, the placement of box street parking in the front. I think we strike that whole thing. It's underlined. And then we strike number one and number two. Uh, and then in improving an administrative use permit for front, you're, the review authority shall find, we strike that too. So all of that red, basically, except for general requirements, is just taken off the resolution, I believe.
So, so B and C and just all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
B and C.
Yeah. Before we continue, Commissioner Young, you had a question.
I did. Can we please have public comment?
We'll do so.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Have a motion of open public comment?
Motion to open public comment.
Well, I mean.
Second. All on agreement? Let's go ahead. And you're Teresa Mitchell, I believe. Actually waiting, we were talking earlier, in fact.
Yeah, um, yeah, hi, my name's Teresa Mitchell, I live in District Four, just a couple houses down from Aviation. Um, I'm also have two degrees in planning and thirty years in, in land use and development, in building infrastructure. So, um, specifically researching parking requirements with Don Chu, who did, um, Colorado Boulevard, so it's something I'm very familiar with. Um, so I just wanted to come to expressly support that, I think this is fantastic. Um, I really strongly support the eliminating of the parking for the non-residential uses and to have it into the rear. Um, there's two other things, like, like you said, we wanna make it walkable, that I would recommend. Um, you guys have already mentioned it, is eliminating the drive-throughs. And the second would be to put a maximum of a, maximum driveway width of like a single driveway of fifteen feet. Cause particularly walking down Aviation, and I, I have a three-year-old dog, so I do a lot of walking. Um, some of the curb cuts are fifty or fifty feet or two fifty or two hundred feet. So, like, you're walking down the street in, on a driveway all the time, so the cars just pull directly into a parking space. They don't even go into a driveway and circulate, they just drive right into you. So, um, to be more, um, like, just for more safety and, and to allow more sidewalks and more curb parking is just reduce those driveways.
So, fifteen feet?
Fifteen feet, I think, that's a single, that's, that's a little bit bigger than the parking standard requirement that Public Works has for a single driveway.
I mean, that would mean if you wanted to exit that parking lot, you'd have, and someone was coming in, you'd have to wait for them to get in before you came out.
Can two cars fit in fifteen feet?
I don't think so.
Both directions?
Not, yeah.
Tiny ones.
Coming and going at the same time.
Yeah, but usually with the, with the curb cut of fifteen feet, you also have the wings, so you actually have a wider, you have a wider.
Two cars traverse this width at the same time?
Yeah, but there's not often that happening, and I mean, that doesn't happen that often. And as a developer, if I don't have to build parking, I'm not gonna build parking. It'd be pretty hard to, like, in these small lots, particularly on, I, I think, it's fif, there're fifty-foot lots on Artesia, there're twenty-five-foot lots on Aviation, twenty-five by ninety, so it's even smaller. So, um, we're looking at more something like, like, um, um, she had said about, um, Pier Avenue. So, I don't, I, I mean, I don't think that, that would be an objective.
Would, is delivery, if, if you eliminate that motion to extend.
Second. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Um, so, I mean, would these businesses take their delivery of goods in the, in the back? Or would the trucks be stopping on Artesia?
It's all residential on the back, so on Aviation, it's single-family homes on the back. And on Artesia, it's, um, it's R-three, so they're multifamily, either condos or apartments, higher density. Um, generally, what we see even now is, um, either loading zones or they double park or they use the, the side streets.
It's always on the street.
It's always on the street. This truck, there's, it's not even big enough, there's, it's not big enough for a truck to turn down, um, at all. So, it's always on the street, I've never seen anyone pull down.
The curb, by narrowing the fifty-foot curb cut, we've just picked up one or two more parking spaces on the street.
At least two more street parking spaces.
Yeah.
And, and you now have a sidewalk with this, with, that you can put a street tree, you can put a bike rack, you can put, um, seating there. It's just much more conducive to public open space.
So, we specify fifteen-foot maximum curb cuts?
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Driveway curb cut, that would be my recommendation. Cause, I mean, I think the study showed there's twenty-two thousand people within a quarter mile of Aviation. That's a lot of people that aren't walking right now. And to be honest, um, like we mentioned, like, on the Artesia, we just walked up Pier Avenue and so all the, all our money is going to Hermosa, which, and beautifying their streets instead of our own neighborhood. And I'd much rather have my own neighborhood retain that money.
Though, uh, cause we just had our, they called it a driveway apron redone.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's, we've double-sized ours, um, but it does also, like you say, have the wing, so you're not, you're not counting that.
The wings on the parking standards for Public Works, it's, it's fifteen feet for the actual driveway and then the wings transition.
Okay, that, that's, that's.
It's a pretty, yeah, cause with that buffer of the wings, you still have room.
A few feet on the side.
Between the buildings as well. Um, and then we also do have quite a few, um, big parking lots. Um, we have the big lots that just closed, which is a big parking lot that's empty. We have Rite Aid that just closed, that is a very big part, and, and I think it was Denny's and then it was an Asian restaurant that closed. So, that's a big parking lot that's available. Um, as you mentioned, the post office, the library, and then the Galleria.
Questions free, I was thinking about the big lots, but the big lots, are there like walkable restaurants?
There's, that's the, that is the line for Hermosa, so the Hermosa side is half of it.
Right.
Right.
The big lots is the Redondo side, so.
They have the Italian place right there and like a Jack in the Box, uh, across the street. But I don't know of, like, other, you know, if you parked in the big lots.
It's a sushi restaurant.
So, well, that's in the mall there.
But there, but there is, there's, I mean, from there, there's, um, it's all in Hermosa.
Ocean Cafe.
Yeah, there's Barchas, there's a, a sushi place, there's a noodle place and, and the Spumoni's, the Italian place. But there are two, like, recently, they just opened Lavender and Honey within the last year and Georgia's. Neither of them have, have, has front parking and they're the most successful, they're the most successful businesses in the area. In fact, Georgia's, their parking is half a block away behind another building.
To extend.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
I.
Uh, Georgia's, is that walkable from the Spartan final?
Um, Georgia's is on, um.
Aviation.
It's Aviation, just short, just by the bike shop near Grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's.
Okay.
It's not walkable from the big lots?
It is.
It is, from big lots it is.
Yeah, it's only, I, that's my, yeah, it's only a couple of blocks.
I wanna walk. Nobody wants to walk.
It's a quarter mile from Prospect to Grant. And that's a hundred percent walkable. So, there's, yeah, that's a very, very walkable.
So, based on your e- experience, would you agree then that, that in conjunction with the zero parking requirement, that we need to be proactive in identifying parking lot, uh, locations?
I think, honestly, the first priority I would say would be crosswalks first. Because you wanna promote walkability, so put things in that make it walkable. So, a crosswalk, a crosswalk alone.
In Hermosa?
Huh?
The signal type with it, like in Hermosa, where the, literally, the ground lights up and stuff.
Because there's a quarter mile between crosswalks. And so, people will walk a quarter to a half a mile, so if you're in the middle, then now to cross the street, you're going around. So, it, it cuts the number of people in half that, they're, now they're not going to the other side of the street, they're staying on their side of the street. And we want them to go everywhere.
It slows down traffic, yeah, right.
So, you're talking about mid-block crosswalks?
Um, well, not necess, they're not necessarily mid-block, but, um, Artesia, there's not a crosswalk on every, on every light.
Right.
A lot of them don't have light, they don't have crosswalks.
Interesting.
Well, it's, there's all kinds of intersections that need crosswalks and Redondo that don't have them. But that's certainly would encourage our goal of making that more walkable.
And Aviation in particular, it doesn't, it doesn't have that thoroughfare the same way.
Stand, second.
Sorry.
All in favor, yeah.
But, yeah, but, um.
Take Sean's seat, will you?
No, no. I don't want that job.
Oh, Sean, we're teasing.
Um, but I do think, but I do think that, um, Aviation in particular, it doesn't, slowing that down doesn't, doesn't inhibit. Part, there's still, people can still go Aviation to PCH, the bigger trucks already do, the faster traffic already does. Um, so what it, it ends up being is more of a neighborhood gathering coming in and getting, which, which that happens throughout the neighborhood, so. Um, and then there is a lot of accommodations of diagonal parking that, you know, maybe shifting from one side to the other side and doing diagonal parking, which gives a little bit, gives you a little bit more, um.
Quite a bit more.
Yeah, quite a bit more. So, I think there's a lot of tools that are available and the city council seems, especially with the APAC. The APAC is fantastic and it has a lot of great information. But this, but reducing, the, the, reducing the part, or eliminating the parking requirement and then the FAR that's coming, that increases the building envelope on these properties from, it, it almost quadruples it. It, I mean, it's amazing how much, and that alone put, creates so much value in the land when you can build a bigger place that sometimes those trusts that the family's sitting on, when that number, when that number gets that much more valuable, then they start paying attention.
Okay, and how about, uh, setbacks to make the sidewalks wider, basically, cause they're pretty narrow?
Um, yeah, I think there's already a five-foot setback, five-foot setback on all of them, which, which isn't actually accommodated. So, what happens in that setback? So, there's already a five-foot front setback and a twenty-foot rear setback. So, even going, even going to the one-point-five FAR, those, those lots, I did the, the math on it, the, the, as a two-story, it's only like one-point-eight stories. So, there's already, there's already room to make, there's already room to make that front, for, bigger. Even maxing out the FAR and the setbacks.
I guess is the question.
The setbacks required.
Well, the setback is five feet from the property line, which is at the sidewalk, right? So, the.
There's a five-foot sidewalk and then there's a five-foot.
Right, so that's ten feet total for pedestrians and tables, if you want, you know, the sort of Riviera Village kind of outdoor dining.
Yeah, I think.
Space.
Artesia needs to go to rooftop dining.
But, if, so the, so the question is, uh, do we, do we somehow make the, in, encourage, you know, more, a wider Artesia corridor by having a, a larger than five-foot, since we're taking away the parking requirement.
But outdoor seating can go in a.
A bigger setback.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but outdoor seating can go within the setback, you just can't build the buildings, you can already have it.
Yeah, but it's not, there isn't, yeah, I guess, the question is.
Not a good place for, for sidewalk dining, that traffic.
But if you get rid of the.
Rooftop.
Oh, sorry.
Rooftop.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, if you get rid of the, the big driveways and you don't, and there's a car parked on the road and you have a street tree, then yeah, it is nice to sit there. It is not nice to sit there when you're, nobody wants to sit in a parking lot that, like, there's a road and then a parking lot. There's no physical buffer that, that blocks the street. But if you have a, a curb that, that's a solid curb and then you have, that's, that there's a car parked, now you have a buffer. It turns into more like a, um, not necessarily Pier Avenue, but more like along like the Ma, um, Manhattan Ave. Like, um, was it Manhattan Ave or Hermosa Ave, um, that are parallel to the Strand, they're the.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so those have very narrow sidewalks and then they've been using the park lids, but there is outside dining and it's very active. I mean, it helps that it's one, one block off the beach.
Well, a lot of that was parking spaces that they, that they, it took over at COVID to have outdoor dining. So, a lot of that, like, uh, Japonica in Hermosa Beach, that, their outdoor dining is essentially, it was a parking space.
Yeah, but they also have a lot of, um, basically, where the gra, the, the lower floor, they just open, it's, it's inside, but then they open it up. Um, I, I, um, the name that changes, it, it's over, um, just north of Pier Avenue, um, on Hermosa, like across.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and it changes all the time, but they, they have, they have quite a few of those that, that it's that outdoor design. And, um, and even on, um, on Pier Avenue, I think it's like the, um, Creperia, where it's, it's outdoor, it's indoor dining, but it's not really.
Oh, yeah, Creamdilla Crepe.
Creamdilla Crepe, and then Rockefeller has the big open windows so that they have, even when they didn't have the parklet, they still had the open windows. So, you're still getting that outdoor dining experience.
Across the street, again, they took over parking spaces, so you have, uh, Hook and Plow, uh, the New Mexican Place, I forget what it's called.
They have parking there, too.
Pardon me?
I think they have diagonal parking.
They do have diagonal parking there.
Yeah, and they, they gave up, they gave up a street lane to have that.
Has there already been any discussion or is that, is that even an option for us to introduce diagonal parking along Artesia?
Oh, it's, there's a number of alternative right-of-way plans within the ACAP. So, it's, it's, you know, that, that is, again, it's kind of a next step. There, the, as, you know, we've just begun to implement the ACAP. It's, we've done, uh, first attempt at rolling back parking standards, making them more flexible, reducing them for preferred uses. You know, we've done, we took away the prohibition for office on the ground floor, um, on the Boulevard. Um, you know, we've just begun to roll out the multiple strategies. And then you saw on that one slide, all the different other categories that are being looked at, rooftop dining and, uh, you know, there's a mul, you know, uh, removing the open space requirement and et cetera. So, parking this now, we're, we're taking parking all the way. We're going, okay, we're not playing around, we're just gonna eliminate the requirement. And so, that's where we're at now. And as far as the public right-of-way options, you know, those are, you know, on the table and waiting to, to go to. And those are, you know, huge infrastructure projects. So, there's a lot of funding and, and, you know, they, they'd have to then become, you know, identify it as a capital improvement program. And then it goes down, you know, it starts going through a, another process. But, you know, they're aware of it, the options for, I don't know if it calls for, it might have diagonal, I'm not sure if it includes it in there. But there's eliminating parking on one side and just having it on the other. Um, there's eliminating it entirely, et cetera. So, the, yeah, it's out there.
Well, very good, well, I thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next time, we'll have you give a presentation. Thank, thank you, um, Mr. Agent.
Does in, so the, when APAC came in front of us, uh, it did not allow fast food, drive-throughs, drive-throughs. Does anybody want to, uh, take that out? So, basically, allow, does anybody want to allow fast food drive-throughs?
I mean, they're, they're allow, I'm sorry to interrupt, they are allowed in the zoning ordinance, it's a recommendation in ACAP that they not be allowed. And then, then for some, how, it's an inappropriate place to have it, the ordinance, before you deny, it actually, it's not being proposed, but we built off the existing one. It prohibits, uh, fast food and drive-through restaurants in, on, on the, in the ACAP. But I don't think we can enforce it, it's, it's, it conflicts with the land use table that says they can. And that's more, so, so it's allowed, fast food and drive-through. It is allowed, but we didn't allow it to have, uh, you know, the reduced parking like other restaurant uses.
Drive-through has to have parking.
In the first page, it says that, um, the city council held a meeting to discuss the city's general plan. So, and the land use settlement update, so basically, there, we're, we're about, the general plan we've been working on, right? We're about to vote on that.
Sure.
So, that would be the time that, that would need, right? Isn't that where that would go?
That's where that would go.
I hate to say, oh, we can't do it cause it's in the general plan, well, the general plan is being reviewed, right?
Oh, totally, yeah, no, there's a, when we get into land uses along the corridor, which is what's gonna be coming next when we update the land use element, there could be a policy saying no drive-through.
Okay, so we can do that then, when you come in front. But in the meantime, I'd really like to, on page two, strike, remove existing language that prohibits restaurants and fast food. Um, you know, I don't wanna keep this in here.
You wanna keep it, okay, I mean, you can recommend that.
If we do that, Sean, what's gonna happen is that it's gonna get dropped in the general plan and next thing you know, we don't have a walking Artesia. Because we've got fast food restaurants coming in.
No, no, I, I.
I'm afraid that if we don't strike this out of here and we leave it the way it was, if we weren't working on the general plan, I'd say, okay, I see your argument, but we are working on the general plan.
Well, that's where we should get into what the appropriate land uses are.
And we will.
Yeah, yeah. Your parking regulations shouldn't be where you prohibit a land use. It's, I don't know, that was weird to put that in there.
But this is actively saying remove it, and we don't have to.
No, you don't have to.
No.
You don't have to.
Yeah, no, we don't have to.
Exactly.
Strike it, strike it out of there.
I've already written that down.
Okay.
Thank you. That wasn't that hard, wait a minute, does everybody agree? Does anybody want fast food?
Yeah, what about the fifteen-foot thing?
I think that's great.
On the fast.
Yeah, I can tell you our minimum standard for two-way driveways is eighteen feet.
Okay, we'll make it eighteen, if that's.
I mean, that's already in our standards.
Okay.
Have to do that.
Then, where did the fifty-foot come before all that?
Fifty foot, oh, that's just a further, you know, the, the speaker's point is, you know, hey, that's, you know, take it as low, as narrow as you can go. I mean, you could recommend that. Um, you know, but, but our standard that we have now, minimum is eighteen feet.
But there's no maximum.
There.
I think your point was that it should not be more than that.
And does that measure, that measures the flat part in the middle?
Yeah, just the flat part, with the wings, it's, the minimum's thirty feet.
How do you feel, Sean, about fifteen versus, versus eighteen?
Uh, fifteen versus eighteen? I mean, you know, again, I think it's a, it, it certainly, again, it speaks to minimizing driveways and, and not, you, you know, being less car-friendly driveways and, and not, you, you know, being less car-friendly and more pedestrian-friendly. So it, it's, you know, it, it's below, I, I would say the 18 feet would be, you know, that minimum and then maybe recommend that there's a, a lesser, uh, apron, a minimum.
Yeah.
You know, maybe make that up to like 22 feet or something, or 24 feet. So you have like a four-foot, so you'd add eight feet, so you'd go to 26 feet. Um, which is, it's not much less than the 30, but I don't know if you can do it. I don't know if you can accommodate a, if you've got 15 feet and you're gonna need at least three or four on each side, so you're gonna get up over 20 anyway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you could, you could.
So we could put 15 and then if it doesn't work out, they, city council can change it.
Yeah, that would be an amendment to a whole nother section of the ordinance, but.
Yeah, because it adds parking, street parking for one, but you know what else, guys? It adds trees, because we now have places to place trees where it was a curb cut. So, you know, we're now working on our, our tree cover. Okay, so we had that, and then can we put something where we want to add crosswalks? Or is that off?
That's not.
Well, it's, it's not in our purview, I mean, it's, you know.
We can suggest to council.
You can suggest, though, yeah, no, I mean, it's, you know, I, I'm not sure. I think there's a lot in the APEC about the mobility and bike lanes and.
Okay.
Additional crosswalks, et cetera. They're gonna, when they get into the, into the right-of-way and what they're gonna do with that, um, as an implementation of APEC, they'll be looking at all those different things. You know, all those different strategies for, you know, again, when it be, starts to actually redevelop, redevelop and revitalize.
Artesia's got.
To the speaker's point, you know, you're got, you're really increasing property values. Maybe some of these trusts are gonna start looking.
Right.
They're the Carl Steeners, there's not one.
And property values of all the homes that surround it as well, you know, and once Artesia and aviation get fixed, every, it's a win-win for everyone.
Everybody goes up.
Yeah. Should we, can we start working on?
Yeah, well, why don't we start, uh, we, we got some good ideas here, let's, let's like flesh it out.
Start working on the resolution?
Yeah, I mean, it, it will be, what we'll do, we'll compile all your recommendations and then those will just be a component of the ordinance that goes to the council and we'll just break them down, you know, when we describe the meeting and we'll just list out all your recommendations.
Instead of going through and striking it out?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that, that's easier to manage than trying to re.
Which one has the most power, though?
Oh, um, well, I mean.
Are you saying you don't want to edit right now there, Sean?
No, that's not it. No, I think, um, you know, it's, I think it then is harder to, well, well, it's harder to present that to the council, you know, the original recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation and try to give them two separate ordinances.
So we're tied, we're, it's the same, here, here's a, here's what's presented, here's like an appendix that we're presenting.
I don't, I don't know if some of those, you know, what you're, we wouldn't put driveway width requirements in the parking regulations for Artesia. We'd have to create a whole nother section, I guess, is what we would do. Um, and it, and I, I don't know if we would write it up as an ordinance. I mean, that we'd make, you know, the recommendations are a lot easier to understand for council, you know, and instead of a whole nother ordinance that's being recrafted by this body.
Yeah, but the problem is, is that how do we, we, we have to either, we have to vote on this resolution, right?
Right.
As it stands, I couldn't vote on it this, I would, I would be a no, as it stands. So the only way for me to vote it is if we take out all this stuff that's in here. How else am I gonna support it? That's what we've always done in the past.
Uh, I don't know if we've done that in the past. We have the ordinance and then we have, if you want to, if you want to make changes to it, you itemize what the changes are. And you'll only approve it with those changes. You know, with those recommended, you know, items.
Okay, so we're gonna rec, we're gonna itemize those and then re- approve the resolution with these changes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
So basically you have an appendix that lists the changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's start, do you have anything there, Sean, or should I just go?
Well, oh, yeah, um, yeah, you can go, I've, I've got most of them written down already, but go ahead and.
Okay, so we are going to, um, not require a conditional use put, uh, permit or administrative review process to have parking in the front of the building, because we're not gonna allow it.
Yeah, only parking in the rear.
Yes.
So if proposed, only parking in the rear, strike, you know, all provisions allowing for parking in the front.
And then if somebody like GrabHub comes along, how do, they, of course, went underground.
Yeah, and you could say that, you could say.
Or underground.
Or underground, only parking in the rear or under, or subterranean.
Right, okay. And, um, we talked about, uh, keeping, um, let's see, not allowing fast food and drive-throughs.
Correct, no fast food or drive-throughs. Prohibited use.
Should I go?
What's that?
Sorry, are you ready?
Yes.
15-foot, uh, curb cuts.
15-foot curb cut or drive aisle?
Oh, oh, yeah, drive aisle.
Drive aisle.
Sorry.
Yeah, and then the engineers can.
Yeah.
You know, do the. Engineer.
Uh, Commissioner Boswell's, um, planning for contingency parking.
Right. Uh, let's see, recommend that city council plan for city parking lots now.
By identifying.
Identifying possible sites. Yeah, identifying potential locations.
And then we'll, uh, talk about crosswalks later or when that comes up.
I mean, you can put it in, you can, yeah, you can definitely put it in.
Add crosswalks?
Recommend more crosswalks.
And you're talking about at intersections where they don't exist.
Don't currently exist.
Okay.
Add intersections. I think that's it, what else we talk about?
Yeah, I didn't, let's see.
Yeah.
Uh, what's your?
Oh, increased setbacks, I heard.
Right, maybe, maybe I'm the only one that's concerned with this, but I'll just bring it up again as proposed amendment to the motion. Um, I'm in, I'm in favor of the, uh, eliminating the, uh, parking requirement, but I think that we need to be, that there also needs to be accountability. So I would just say that, um, I feel like right now we just have, we're just saying, well, let's just take away the parking requirement and then when, when, when there is no parking or the parking becomes an issue, then we'll try and figure it out. I, so I, I would like to see staff come up or identify something in conjunction with this removal of parking requirement. So whether it's proposed parking lots, diagonal parking along one or both sides of the APEC corridor or something, I feel like we just need to have, even if it's a preliminary plan, we need to have something other than we'll solve it when it becomes a problem.
Yeah, because it does say in there that annual reanalysis, but it didn't say what they're gonna do with that or how they're gonna use it. I agree with you, we should put something there in a recommendation.
And I think that could go in Commissioner Boswell's, uh, in the, in that, that sentence, in that, you know, cond- right? You could just expand on his recommendation.
More than just identifying places where, uh, city parking could eventually be.
Or.
Addressing.
Or these alternative.
Stuff like the, uh.
Diagonal.
Well, you know, with, with Artesia being a commuter corridor, taking away a lane to be able to put in diagonal parking.
We may not be allowed to.
Yeah, we might not be allowed to.
I couldn't hear that?
We may not be allowed to.
Well, this is kind of what I'm saying, is that it, is even if we were allowed to, would we want to create the massive traffic jam that taking out half the commuter lanes would create, just to have more parking?
Would make it more walkable, wouldn't it?
Well, it would make everybody drive down, uh, the, uh, residential streets to the north and south.
It didn't work well with bike lanes in Culver City, they, the community just went nuts when they lost a lane.
Del Mar too.
You know, we could do, we could save it.
Hermosa on Pier though, for years.
Yeah.
Everyone has accepted what Pier Avenue is now.
Right. You go slow.
In the summer, you drive, you drive three and a half miles an hour when you can actually put your foot on the gas.
That's great.
It, it worked for what they needed, but that's just a little section down at the, that dead ends into the pier.
Maybe we can add a KDA.
And it really didn't work, this backing in, I, I don't know how many times I've been behind a car that didn't know how to back up.
Yeah.
So if diagonal spots aren't an option, then all the more reason we need to identify where, uh, preliminarily identify where a lot or two could go.
That was my point, yeah. That's your best, that's our best option for 10 years or whatever down the road to have something already, you know, in the hopper.
We're gonna take away parking here.
Well, I mean, I, I, I had put out a, a suggestion years ago that we should have some kind of a, uh, circulating tram.
I'm in favor of that too.
At the Galleria, and it's a park and ride.
Yeah.
I worked in college, I worked the park and ride at the Federal Building in Westwood for the Hollywood Bowl.
There you go.
30 buses.
Maybe we add.
30 RTD buses, as they called it in those days.
Do the diagonal parking just on aviation, allow that and then instead, we're thinking Artesia, but maybe we go with that aviation, encourage diagonal parking on aviation.
I don't know if you could do it there, because that, that street has so many bends in it.
That is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a really.
It's a racetrack.
Go there so fast.
It's a racetrack.
Unless there's so many accidents with people just walking.
And again, that's, that's, isn't that the, the department, that's the public works stuff anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is aviation.
They don't have to necessarily figure out the solution, but.
What's that?
Say that staff needs to come up with something.
Oh, we're just.
Put on that.
We could just pave it over and make a parking.
Yeah.
I think we'd be good with it.
All right, so we got it?
I have one more thing I'd like to add.
Mr. Gaddis.
And that is that, uh, I'd like to add to it that we'd like council to direct, uh, staff to, uh, consider whether, uh, a, a, a larger setback of new construction on Artesia Boulevard, uh, would be, would prove advantageous towards the goal of making it a walkable area. It's, it's certainly not walkable now.
Definitely would.
Yeah.
I think it definitely would too, but.
Yeah.
I'm no traffic engineer, so.
I agree with that.
But all you have to do is sleep at a, uh, Comfort Inn the night before.
All right.
I think that's it, can you read that, Sean?
What's that?
Can you read what we added, just to.
Okay, sure, um, so recommend that city council plan for city parking lots now in conjunction with the elimination of parking and other, and identify, uh, by identifying, uh, potential locations and other, I've got parking strategies uh, within the co- within Artesian Aviation Boulevard. Okay, A-CAP, um, uh, the increased front setback. Uh, direct staff, uh, to consider, uh, and analyze larger front setbacks. Prohibit, uh, fast food and, or and or drive-through restaurants.
Slow food drive-through.
If providing parking only in the rear, um, let's see, now it's additional, you know, clarification, strike B and C for allowing parking in the front. Uh, maximum driveway width, uh, reduced to 15 feet for two-way. And add crosswalks where they don't exist on Artesia Boulevard.
And aviation.
And aviation.
And aviation. Uh, and. And. Okay, I think that's.
They did it on Gaffey.
Think that's it.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, a motion to approve resolution number 202509PC909 with the additions as read by the planning director.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call, roll call vote, sorry.
Commissioner Light?
Aye.
Commissioner Boswell?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Gaddis?
Aye.
Commissioner Conroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazelton?
Yes.
Chairperson Craig?
Aye, the motion carries.
We did it!
All right, well done.
It's not midnight!
Thank you for your help.
Well done.
It is, it feels like it.
Thank you, Teresa.
Pull up the chair.
90 seconds to curfew.
Next time we'll have you run the meetings.
Curfew. I think, I think we're old enough that we can be.
So we, we need to.
I'm way old enough.
All right, we need to continue now, so, uh, any items, uh, continue from previous agendas we need to talk about. No, I don't believe so. Mr. Scotty's rushing around.
Uh, no, no items?
No items, no items for discussion prior to action.
Um, where do I say something?
That's you now, next.
Okay, so next month is normally when we would, uh, elect a new chair, right? But, uh, Chair Craig came in late, remember, because Sheila left. So, um, should we just, is everybody in agreement he should just continue on until next October? How do you feel about that? And so there would be no election in October, Sean, because, or do we have to go through the motion of electing him again or what?
Let me, yeah, let me check with the city clerk.
Okay, okay, because we can do that, it's just he's only been in the position for like six months or something. Not even.
No, it was May.
It's been that long. It's like May of, yeah.
Yeah, and then if we keep doing it every April, we've gone off the schedule of it's supposed to be October.
Okay. Who's our vice chair?
And the vice chair, whoever that is.
Yeah, because I, I think the process, you have to elect, you have to elect a.
I know when he was absent, I ran the meeting. I don't know that I was elected vice chair.
Yeah, because the way it worked.
Yeah, because you, he was vice chair, so we need a, we need a vice chair.
He was vice chair, that's funny.
Well, the process, we, we have to elect a, a chair and a vice chair, correct?
Right, you're right.
We don't know who that is, that's what.
Yeah, because I, I.
Okay, well, we can fire Wayne as vice chair and ask someone else.
No, yeah, I think, yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to, at minimum, elect the vice chair.
Elect, elect the chair and vice chair.
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be next time.
Next time.
Okay, uh, any items from staff?
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was jumping, jumping.
Okay, let's continue. Uh, any items from staff?
Um, no items at this time. Uh, we've just, you know, we're really gearing up on the land use element and getting that back to council. So there'll be a lot coming on that. Um, and that'll also follow quickly by open space and conservation and noise and safety elements. So all that stuff's getting, getting geared up again, that's the big news in our department. Um, and that's really it.
Okay, and any commission member items and future commission agenda topics?
Oh, that's when I'm supposed to.
Yeah.
That probably was, that was appropriate, I don't think there is any. Um, and, uh, I'd like, for a formal adjournment and I'd like to adjur- adjourn tonight in honor of, uh, our favorite mayor, Bill Brand, tomorrow would have been his birthday.
Oh, happy birthday, Bill.
Happy birthday.
Remember him and all of us, um, are here because of him, thank you.
Thank you.
Adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Your adjourn.
Thank you, Sean, that was.